Okay, questions and comments. Audience comments are always welcome as agenda items are discussed. Does anyone have anything? Okay. I'm gonna skip reading the paragraph unless we have someone that wants to contribute. Love hearing my voice, but not that much. Okay, number four. Superintendent's report.
Well, first, some good news. We get lots of good news at this time of year, of course, with celebrations and awards and that kind of thing. But certainly, the most recent one is in athletics and our boys lacrosse team. The Division Two State, not just district, but State Boys Lacrosse Team. So congratulations to them. And I included the link on your email of the annotated agenda so that you could see some of the celebratory things. I think I added there then. I don't know whose idea of celebration it is when you dunk someone in icy water. But that appears to be how one celebrates in the sports world, at the professional level as well as the kid level. Whoops. So also, I think you just got a copy of another photo. Did Kate just drop something off for you tonight? Or did she give it only to me?
I don't have anything.
Anyway. So this photo. I thought she had put it in the packet, but I'm not sure that she did. So anyway, good work by all involved there, coaches and students. And a great event that was celebrated this morning at school as well. So Athletic Director's Search. We had, as of last week, at the end of last week, I think it was eighty-six candidates. Did advertise, of course, on School Spring as well as locally. And when you advertise on School Spring, often there are people that don't meet all the qualifications. So Margaret and I met and we talked a bit about ways that we could winnow down that number because that's not a feasible number to try to interview or even screen in an adequate way. So we went back and looked particularly at the criteria. And given the size of our program, the number of different sports we offer, and the fact that we're in Massachusetts, not in Ohio or whatever, we really believe that we need to be looking for an experienced athletic director. In that number of eighty-six, there are a lot of folks who are coaches but had no leadership or academic experience. So we've gone through that list to see if we can weed out some of the things that really aren't worth someone's time in pursuing, even a look at an interview. So we're hoping to get it winnowed down. We also added in a step that we did for both the principal searches, but that we hadn't anticipated doing here, and that was to do a paper screening as well. So next week, we'll do a paper screening of the candidates that we've winnowed down by looking at what we think we really need in terms of experience. So that will help a lot. We're in the process of mailing out or calling folks who will be on the screening committee and also those folks that we're going to ask to participate in the paper screening process. We've determined two dates that the screening committee will meet. The first one will be next Monday evening for the screening committee, and it will be kind of an orientation to the whole process of being on a screening committee, need for confidentiality and the steps that we'll take and so on. And the second meeting would be a meeting where the committee would actually identify those among the remaining candidates that we would interview. And then the interviewing, depending upon how many people they identify, the interview may take three or four meetings, and the committee itself will schedule those. So we're convinced of the importance of doing this search in July rather than in August because we were somewhat overwhelmed by the number of candidates, but also the fact that through our kind of informal research, most people tend to be traveling, who do travel, in August rather than July. And we feel that's a better month to be able to get a critical number of the players here to the meetings that will be required. So it's good news in a way that we've got a lot of, we have a lot of sitting ADs, experienced people. So that's good. We'll still have a lot to choose from, even though we applied that criteria to narrow it down. So as soon as the folks are all notified, because we have some people on the waiting list, they'll give you the list of those folks. But it's a good cross-section of coaches and parents and particular people such as the trainer, the athletic trainer, the administrative assistant for the AD, does not include Margaret, obviously, and some other very specific people that need to be there. We are fortunate to have, the co-chairs for this search will be Rick, who would be an obvious one, being a high school principal, but also a person who lives in town, a resident, who has been an athletic director and now is an assistant athletic director. And she, her name is Kristen Parnell. She is also a former school committee member. So she and Rick will co-chair the committee. And they're both aware of that, so I can release those names. The others, I'd rather let you know after, in case we have to go back to one of the backup candidates. So good news, but a lot of work ahead certainly to get back.
And I think I, so Aileen and Carlos will be the two school committee representatives.
Right.
So then everyone, Michelle, you'll be next up. But everyone will have participated in a search committee. So then the next search committee, Michelle. But and I, you know, there is interest. And I believe too that Aileen and Carlos both have unique distinct athletic experiences at the high school. And so that I think their own personal experiences will complement the effort as well. So thank you to you for volunteering to do that.
So we talked about technology at the last meeting and determined that we would indeed sell Chromebooks. Or maybe that's not the right word. We did use the word sell because we have a sales tax on it to interested eighth grade students or parents who wanted to keep them to move on to the high school. So we did a survey and determined that there was a critical mass. At the time I checked the survey, I don't know how many there were filing it, but at the time they checked, there were more than a third of the class members that were interested. So that's a good thing. We had said the price would be between thirty-five and forty dollars. John and I determined that it would be forty, but that we needed to impose a sales tax. And we said that's gonna be about two fifty. And so the cost was forty-two, fifty. Derek did send a message. The information about the technology for kids moving from eighth grade to ninth grade, we put on the website rather than send another email. And that information is on the middle school page. And there's a whole section, quite a number of things there actually, which is good, where it says eighth to ninth grade information. So that's something we had been intending to do. I originally intended to send this an email, but an awful lot of emails going out the last week. So it seemed to be better there, and it is there.
Was that included in any email along the way?
Hmm?
Has that been included in any email maybe to the eighth grader?
Derek, yes. Derek included it in the email that he sent last Thursday or Friday. It says there to check out the website.
A number of eighth grade parents did not receive that, including me, by the way. So I need to get that sent. Didn't receive that email at all. So I don't know whether, I'll talk to him about it.
I saw it.
I know some did.
Oh, some did.
But I didn't, and a number of other people I know didn't. So it's just interesting. I've received all the other ones. So I don't know what happened, but I'll email Derek about it.
I don't know either. But there's been something going on with X2 recently. Today, for example, it was just down for a time. We couldn't check things. In fact, a half hour ago, Kate tried to check something that was down. So I don't know. We'll look into that.
Yeah. But if it has information like that in it, maybe he could resend it or something. I'll ask him to look into it.
Yep, we can.
Need to have people miss that.
I wonder if it's this problem that we've been experiencing with folks that have Verizon.
Well, I have Comcast, though.
You have Comcast.
And I got it as a seventh grade parent.
Oh, really?
Well, it wasn't just about eighth grade information.
Yeah, it was a separate email that had some other things in it. I, I don't know what to say.
I'll connect with Derek about that.
It might make sense to put it, like, over the summer, to put it on the high school webpage too? Because then people, yeah, they'll start thinking, I'm a ninth grader now.
That's a good idea. Yeah. And so.
Okay.
We seem to have difficulty getting information about technology.
Using our technology, yeah.
I don't know.
There's, I have one more comment about technology. This morning at the community outreach forum, we heard some very informal feedback that essentially, third-hand, that some of the elementary schools might be able to use some of the Chromebooks.
Might be.
Able to use some of the Chromebooks.
Well, that was part of our plan, was to put them into cards. I was really very surprised by looking at the, Derek had given me a summary of the responses. And the one about the condition, what's the condition of the Chromebook? The majority of the kids said, "Good." So I was surprised to get that because that was their assessment.
Yeah.
I don't know. Well, that's good that they would like some more because I think we still are gonna have, unless all of a sudden, people that didn't answer the survey want to buy them, which they could because the information about how to buy it didn't say it was restricted to people who had answered the.
Right. And the feedback too this morning, there were a couple of parents that were really glad that they were getting that opportunity for the transition into high school. So they were, that was some of the good stuff we heard.
Okay. Testing update. I was curious, having come to the June meeting of our administrative council. You know, the online testing that we had been so worried about for several years now, back when first the PARC testing occurred. How it went, nobody had said anything about glitches or problems or concerns or whatever. So we asked the principals and they all said it went well. On the very first day, there were a few little things that got fixed. They weren't our problems, but they anyway got fixed and that the testing went well without a vent. Kids enjoyed it. Now, it doesn't say that the results are gonna be as good as the kids thought the experience was. But, you know, all the preparations that were done, and kudos to Jamie and the tech people from all the buildings who've gotten together insofar as to plan a dry run. And it took a lot of work to feel confident. But we seem to be good in terms of capacity and good in terms of our access. And we can only hope that the results are equally good. We did get an email the other day from the commissioner's office that really was a little bit disappointing in terms of the information that we're going to get back will be less complete, in a sense, than it has been in the past and slower to come than it has been in the past. And of course, we still don't know fully what kinds of accountability information we'll get back. So I think there will be something that will get sent to parents. But in terms of having information to compare it, in terms of getting it in a more reasonable timeframe, that doesn't seem to be the case. They're prioritizing doing the scoring, if you will, for the 10th graders because that is important. The kids need to be prepared to have to take a test again. We wanna know those kinds of things. So that makes sense to prioritize it. But everybody else is just anxious in a way. But anyway, good news.
Was there any feedback from our staff about the questions and the quality of the questions?
No, there wasn't. And I, there's such stringent security embargoed things on them that I hesitated to ask that because they're, they have to sign off that they follow all the protocols exactly. And their license is really online. So I didn't want to ask anything that might compromise their sharing of information.
I, my daughter took the seventh grade test, so she didn't do it online. And I remember one, now I'll have to ask her again. One of them, she found the question, it was easy. The other one, that she got really confused again.
Yeah.
And that the questions were, it was hard to know how to answer them.
Exactly. And it would be hard to know, to interpret what the results will be.
Right.
I'm afraid. The other thing that I didn't know, maybe you remember hearing something about this, Jamie, but it said in the commissioner's memo that we are not going to be getting complete results for below grade ten. So that suggests to me that there are perhaps some test questions in there as well as the ones that will count or some sort of a score. But it didn't elaborate much on that. So we're gonna have to listen for further information.
Is the delay in getting the results, do they wait until they have everything online and otherwise?
No, I don't think they necessarily do both of those things. But I think it's the setting the standards for the scoring. Because they can't do that until they have all of the results in. So it was that way when we first did the first. So this time, their solution, I think, to that is just to say, well, we'll prioritize the things that you need to get first and let the others be slower as opposed to making everything be slower. The commissioner is out on medical leave at the moment. I don't know that that has anything to do with what's happening. But he was supposed to be a speaker last week at our South Shore Superintendent's meeting, but he was unable to attend. Associate Commissioner attended, and he's always a very, very good speaker. But he chose to talk about the budget, which was good information, but pretty glum information, I would say, that he had about the revenue, the state budget this is, about the revenue forecast, both for the short term, for this year, and also for the longer term. So it was good to know that, but none of us enjoyed hearing particularly what he had to say. We will defer this topic. We still have some work to do on the two contracts. So we'll talk about that likely tomorrow in our salary negotiation meeting. Jamie's gonna share with you a curriculum update that he sent out to our staff members last week. And we thought you would enjoy hearing about that as well. You do have it in your packet.
Yeah, so I think you have a hard copy of the email that was sent to the faculty last week, updating them on a number of initiatives that we have been working on or in progress and sort of giving them a sense of the work to come going into next year. And I'm incredibly excited to be here to talk to you about some of the work that we have going on. First being the, as you know, we have formed a district-wide task force of parents, community reps, faculty, staff, administration, and students focused on the sort of implementation and development of a multi-tiered model for social-emotional supports. And so we have had two meetings so far. And actually, at all of your places, you have a listing of those numbers of the task force and sort of what, which constituent groups they represent, their presence on the group. The partnership has been established with the Vassar University School of Education Social Adjustment and Bullying Laboratory. And they're gonna be partnering with us to actually organize and run and analyze a district-wide anonymous survey of students, parents, and faculty scheduled for early October. Our last meeting was just last week with our consultant. And I will say that the entire partnership is being funded fully through the generous support of the Hingham Education Foundation. So they have, they voted and approved the partnership. And they're funding the entire partnership. From that survey, we will get information relative to the needs of our population, which will inform our work in developing sort of what will be our Tier One Universal Supports for All Kids, what areas of support our kids might need for Tier Two and for Tier Three. And again, in the fall, we can present a more sort of comprehensive overview of what the model looks like. And but we're sort of following a multi-tiered model similar to RTI that you see in academics, where about eighty percent of our kids will be caught in Tier One, that's for the general program. About fifteen percent of kids will need support in Tier Two, or small group instruction. And those smaller proportion of kids, about five percent, will receive more intensive supports. And so that work is ongoing. Our last meeting was just last week. We have the survey in development. And there'll be more about that in the fall, when it's time to actually administer. Another update is effective September. All students in grades K through five will have a computer science class as a part of their weekly rotation in specials. This will take the place of the previously offered computer class. About a year ago, the Commonwealth released the first iteration of the Digital Literacy and Computer Science Standards, or learning curriculum frameworks, which actually provide sort of the backdrop, the structure around which we're forming our computer science classes. So all students K to five will have access to computer science next year as a part of a special in a weekly cycle. As well as in the fall, we'll begin recruiting a group of teachers from regular education, both elementary and secondary, to form a cohort looking at more immersive ways that we can integrate computer science into our classrooms while simultaneously sort of preserving content, while allowing kids to do innovative ways to show us what they know through computer science. Both initiatives, I will also note, are being fully funded by the Hingham Education Foundation in their generosity and support. So we're particularly excited for the rollout of our computer science.
Jamie, and actually, if, maybe we can get questions on each subject.
Oh, sure, do you want to go back?
We don't go through the whole thing and then jump around.
Sure.
So, sorry, I should have, I was thinking of that before. Just to go back, does anybody have any questions on the social-emotional process? Okay. And that's still pretty early, so. But on the computer science, what kind of tools is HEF funding?
So they're funding, right now, between now and July one, they actually funded all of the sort of the seed money to actually go and explore different tools and materials to use in the classrooms. For example, Dash and Dot is sort of a robot pair that the kids actually program and can command to make shapes and turn corners. We're looking at, oh goodness, what is it called? I'm drawing a blank on the specific names. In the primary grades, they're looking at sort of teaching kids basic programming and looping skills, right? That's a part of the engineering design and computer coding process. That will then lead into them actually commanding and building robots and telling the robots what to do. In the fourth and fifth grade, we're actually looking at our students actually building their own laptops and understanding the programming of computers and machines and understanding the basics around how computers actually structure and answer questions for you. And then in the fifth grade, we're looking at more, we're getting into more applications. So the early elementary grades are looking at more sort of direct instruction. And I will note that the framework has multiple strands, right? So there's one around computing and society, there's one around personal and ethical use. So our goal is to sort of produce ethical, well-rounded consumers and producers of technology. So kids who can actually produce rather than just sort of consume, right? And have an understanding of how to actually build and construct apps, for example, to solve problems. And using the engineering design process, kids will be given sort of real-world problems and be asked to find new and innovative ways to actually solve those problems using sort of the new vocabulary they're learning. And each of those different tools, like Dash and Dot and the early programming and the computer construction, they're actually learning different coding languages to actually tell the machine what to do. And so that, going into next year, we're really focusing on K five with beginning of integration and immersion in regular ed, which are across content areas. And then going into the following year, we're looking at the middle school program to sort of pick up with their one-to-one and build off of the skills that are coming from the fifth graders going into sixth and look more of a stepwise progression through secondary.
But the standards don't make an assumption that there be a specific class. So we have kind of a leg up to have an existing computer offering at the elementary level. We can use that in addition to a number of the kinds of activities that are in, at least the hands-on part of it, are through science. They're part of the science curriculum, so they fit most naturally there. But in the end, we're gonna have to have things taught in a variety of other disciplines. And that work has to happen next year. But it's quite a demanding, if you look at those standards, they really are demanding. There's no test at this point, of course. And we're fortunate to be able to have a lot of extracurricular kinds of activities that get involved in some of these things, robotics at almost every level, the coding, some other things that would come under this that may be in the elementary enrichment programs. So there are lots and lots of places that kids are gonna get exposed to these standards. But however you look at it, if you read them, and many of the words are gonna be foreign to a lot of people because they're computer-specific. If you read them, it's a challenge. No longer just the domain of a high school computer science or programming course.
So that the.
So some of the, just to answer, to be more specific, I was looking for the actual answer. So those, so I can't say what we're using for sure because we're still in exploration phase. But we know sort of what the product needs to do for us, if that makes sense. We've sort of used the standards to figure out what we have to do. So the tools themselves are Boost, Dash and Dot, Cano, Kibo Blocks, and that's the primary sort of kindergarten grade one where they actually learn the basics of coding and programming. Osmo, Sphero, and Wido are the seven tools that they're exploring.
So when, will this be put on, in addition to, will they still be doing some of the things they're doing now in the, that part of the cycle of specialist with the computer? When they go for computer training?
So there's still some base literacy skills, right? Because remember, the framework is digital literacy and computer science. So it actually acknowledges both pieces. So things like keyboarding and typing, that will all still be there. But the enrichment beyond the base skills is really where the excitement comes and sort of where we're excited for the rollout, where kids can actually begin to experiment and sort of learn another language, which is CS, computer science.
And that's one of the reasons that getting this technology position at the elementary, a technician position is important. So that those folks can concentrate on the teaching because there's gonna be a lot more of that and a lot of new topics as opposed to, you know, booting up the computers and making sure they all work and installing apps and the things that they've been doing in addition to that.
Okay.
I think it sounds all very fascinating. I know my boys would love to learn coding in school. I am concerned that some of the basics, such as keyboarding, might not be taking place. So I'm glad you asked that question because I know that each elementary school, I think, does, some teach keyboarding and some don't. And I think it's really important now that we have Chromebooks in the middle school, now that we're going to a computerized MCAS test, that we don't forget how important keyboarding really is. And, you know, when I ask my boys. And, you know, when I ask my boys, aren't you so happy that mom taught you keyboarding? They say, Mom, that's the best thing you taught me because I really do help, think it helps with the stress at the middle school. So when our kids are getting into middle school, I think learning keyboarding is too late. So I hope some of those basic computer skills are still going to be taught at the elementary level.
I think I did address that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a compliment. And actually, this year, because we were going online testing, both second and third graders spent a good proportion of time, and fourth graders actually preparing for third and for fourth, spent a decent amount of time with the keyboarding skills that was taught regularly and supplemented in the regular education classrooms, if not just, and it wasn't just, I guess, during that block of time. Because the, particularly fourth grade who recognized that they were going to be testing, right, really sort of to ensure the kids were ready and felt comfortable. Since September, we've been working on those skills. So we, that's the goal, is to preserve what we know has to be there. And again, it's digital literacy, so it's broader than just keyboarding. They also need to know how to navigate the computer and to use drop boxes and expand and contract and, you know, use text boxes and how to cut and paste, right? So there's other skills there, too. And our goal is to give our kids a real balance between those skills.
I think what we have difficulty doing is the repetition. So we can teach the skills, and there are lots and lots of different software packages available that you could have at home and that kids could use during the day at school. But what we don't have, that, that some of us had, taking keyboarding or typing, it was twelve years ago, is that we had a class every single day to practice those skills. And it's kind of like learning the math facts and so on. We need more help for kid, from home, for kids who have the need to practice more than others. And spend the time in teaching the skills, and you can do that in one day in a six-day cycle, but, but you can't get the practice that most people would like to see in school. That just isn't time to do that anymore. Or staffing, actually, if everybody were to take it every day, so. So we encourage people to try to provide opportunities for that at home as well. But as Jamie said, those other skills in terms of the test-taking are equally important, and they are definitely keyboarding-related skills and not just the typing.
Which I think if we look at sort of when we got feedback from our faculty around, and students around how the testing went, I mean, we received very little feedback that nobody felt ready or prepared, right? So our kids could navigate the system, they felt like they were able, we didn't, the teacher's watching, we didn't see any fatigue relative to typing, so we feel confident that the preparation that they were given sort of enabled them to be successful test takers in that new environment. It was not just new for them, it was new for the teachers and for our technology staff as well. But preparation, right, that's our, was our goal. And from all reports that we've received, the kids were well-prepared and the, as was the faculty, with a relatively smooth rollout of testing.
I think if, in light of this conversation about the testing and then the description here of the computer science rollout, I think when we roll, when we roll out this information to parents, which I mentioned when we put this on the agenda, I said to Jamie, this great process of figuring out how we're going to communicate more things to parents, that we communicate this early in the fall because, wait till the school year begins. But the way this is worded of replacing the previously offered computer classes, it's really, it's more enhancing it or, so we're not doing away with the key things that we taught in that previous class.
It's a good point, it's not replacing, it's just-
So it's, or it's an evolution of it because, I mean, I think I agree with Kay, like, as a parent, I would be like, oh my gosh, what happened to the, you know, the basic skills in order to take the test, you know, like to do everything else? So I think that, you know, we should be cognizant of that, of how we explain that some things aren't going away. Okay. But it is very exciting and-
It's a great opportunity for our students.
Yeah.
And I want to go back to that, that it's going to be a great-
Definitely, yeah.
So just to sort of continue, are there any thoughts about CS before I move on to the next? The next two are probably quick hits. The first is we have rolled out a new professional development management system. So we have formed back in September, a forty-plus K-12 professional development committee who's, who is charged with sort of examining our existing structure, conducting a survey of our faculty and, and support staff relative to their perceived needs around professional development, areas they'd like to grow in. And a part of that discussion was sort of actually streamlining the management process relative to PD, and so we have rolled out and fully launched, we all six schools have been, for those who chose to attend, we ran on, in-school training sessions on the use of the system. And so this new PD system actually manages and tracks all of their professional development. That's where they register for everything, that's where they actually get their certificates issued. There's also modules which help them manage and track their IPDIP, which is their Individual Professional Development Plan, which they're required to have when they go to re-like, to recertify. If you're interested in looking at it, you can actually peruse it and see all the links and information without logging in, and that can be accessible via our homepage, so hinghamschools.com. On the right side, you'll see important links, the very last link is professional development. If you click on that link, it'll actually launch into the new PD site where you can find all of the, you can actually review under the offerings tab all the offerings that we ran over this past year, as well as look at some of the information for the professional development program, quick hits for teachers, frequently asked questions about IPDIP and relicensure and PDPs. That's sort of our new one-stop shop for all things PD, and it's been received very well from our faculty and staff so far.
And who was in charge of putting all that together?
So it was a team, it was a team effort, so I-
But it's a piece of software.
No, I know, but somebody had to upload all that information and figure it out.
It's taken a while, yeah, we're getting there. It's, that's been the most work actually, has been uploading. So I've been working on that with, actually, one of our interns, Gabby, who's working here in the summer, and she's been uploading sessions as well. So it's been an ongoing effort, collaborative effort really amongst the whole team.
And Karen, of course, has always done a lot of the work, most of the, the production work on the PD booklet, because that's been online for a long time. And so this is now something that gives teachers better access to that and provides some extra services that they will value.
And have people been starting to fill it out?
Oh yes, oh absolutely.
Well, Jamie goes there until they get, no.
No, we do go, and we've offered individual conferences for people who couldn't make the sessions. We actually started at the middle school, and we had faculty that couldn't make it but heard great things about people who attended and then showed up at all the subsequent training. So the word has, I think, spread positively about the, the sort of how it streamlines the process and everything is right there at their fingertips. We've received a lot of positive, a lot of positive feedback, a lot of thank yous, a lot of this is a huge help. So it's been a good addition.
Did you want to mention time changes that-
That was coming up next, actually, yeah. So in, in the next piece is the 2017-18 professional development program, and we have sort of restructured a bit the way we sort of will roll out PD. And that really comes from the issue of the, you know, time, which is one of the most precious resources we have, and we just don't have enough of it. One of the issues that we've sort of come across is sort of not having sort of the time to actually give sort of bundles of ten PDPs to our educators. And in order to be eligible for relicensure, any professional activity they do must be in a minimum of ten, sort of buckets of ten, packets of ten. And so going into next year, we have, and the final calendar has been, the calendar has been finalized with the dates and the times of the early releases. They're essentially the first Wednesday of the month, October through June, with the exception of January where it's actually the second Wednesday of the month, because we would've just gotten back to school and then been out for a day. Five of those days will be professional days at the secondary level and at elementary, and then elementary will have four additional conference days for parent conferences. In, on our professional development days, in order to get some more time, we're actually changing our release times a bit, so we're, rather than a two-hour release, we're moving to a three-hour release. So that would be prior to lunch. The kids will be dismissed, and all the times are actually on the back of the calendar for the professional days. Yes?
That, I think we should get out before school gets out this year.
Okay.
Is it on, is that calendar on the website yet?
Yes, I believe so.
We just put it on.
Okay. Yeah, that would be a good thing to put places.
Yeah, we, we just finished it.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
We will, yep. So, and that's true of the, of the professional development days. And that is, again, to get time, so it may not seem like a lot of time, for, for us on the professional development side, it actually gives us another hour per release day to actually deliver professional development.
Which is wonderful for our teachers to get the professional development, that's awesome.
Yes.
Okay, that's great.
What's the name of the software being used?
Smart PD.
Smart PD.
Yep. And it was actually purchased a number of years ago through a collaborative, the SCRO, the South Coast Regional Organization, this collaborative, the collaboratives, and one of their goals, informing the collaborative, the collaborative, was to sort of see what they can streamline resources across sort of region, and professional development is one of those areas. So actually, Hingham has the setup sort of already pre-built because we are members of the South Shore Collaborative, and actually, our teachers have access to all professional development being offered through South Shore Collaborative, as well as all of the other South Coast collaboratives from South Shore all the way down to Cape Cod. And actually, all the member districts can also open up, open seats for PD. And then when the teachers actually get in and see all the sessions running across the South Coast, you can see their eyes kind of say, wow, I didn't realize this is all happening. So it actually puts it all at their fingertips, as opposed to sort of those incessant emails sort of saying, don't forget about this, or this is coming up, or that's coming up. It actually now is all in one, one place for them. But for the, relative to the time, we will communicate that out to our families. It's actually the same time that we do on, the same timeframe that we do on Thanksgiving, the day before Thanksgiving. So that being more often, right, will be a change, but we'll make sure-
Won't be every release, that-
Right.
Correct.
Okay, oh, well then, okay then. Yeah.
But we didn't, we didn't get it done before we could-
Yeah, and if- Oh no, I understand that, I, I get that, I, it's just-
And there was some complexity in scheduling, if you can imagine.
If we could put that 2017-18 calendar on every school website, I just found it, but I had to dig.
Sure.
Had to go to the district page, it's on the district page, but if it could be on every school's homepage, that would be really helpful, I think, because I don't think a lot of people are going to dig. We get a lot of questions about that. When's vacation? So that would be awesome.
So that's exciting. So I understand that it is, it is going to be a change, but on the backend, I think the, the value added for our faculty is going to be really measurable. And there's also been a lot of excitement around a block of ten PDPs. So three of those days will be K-12 professional days, where we will have sessions running, sort of like in the fall, every teacher will get a catalog of sessions running that will be interest-based and also sort of areas for their own personal growth they like to grow in. And that was real, that came through really strongly. We did a comprehensive survey of, of both teachers and, and support staff, and the biggest theme that came out for us really was around the option of choice and having some decision over what they engage in, the kind of learning they engage in. So this is our opportunity to sort of have the best of both worlds. We have three days where teachers can engage in sort of district-wide choice options, and then three days, two days, where it's more district-determined and building-based. One of those days for every level will be a social-emotional day, where we cover the new framework and the new model and the multi-tiered system that we're building, and they hear feedback on the data. And then every other school has another day that's unique to them and what they want, they're working on is a building. So we were able to sort of bring the, sort of the best of both worlds together, a district approach coupled with individual choice.
PD, professional development-
Points, yeah. And, and in a, in a five-year cycle, a teacher with one professional license needs to amass one hundred and fifty of those to recertify, and then another thirty for every additional license beyond the first. So some people, like for me, example, I need to amass two hundred and ten in a five-year cycle. And so us being able to actually offer those in-house, we're hoping will serve our teachers well over time.
And the fact that, that the numbers now have to include certain categories like
Correct.
SEI and, and special education. So we really feel an obligation to get as much of that out and available to people as, as possible because it's a simply requirement that's new that, but you would be amazed at how much operationally has to change just to get that one extra hour.
Oh, yeah.
Mainly because of transportation.
Yeah.
Because our schools all get out at different times, and different times still on the release day, and then you have the issue of the high school enjoying the PD that they can get done in the morning, and then there's the issue of, of lunch. It seems easy to say simply, well, we won't have lunch on a release date, but we have to clear that with Kim and John because that's part of the revenue stream. And so it sounded so great when all the things are put together, and then we say, oh, we've got to talk to Kim, or we've got to talk to, but everybody was cooperative and-
And everyone is actually, for the most part, really excited.
Works out.
I mean, even Kim, the food service director, was excited to actually get some time with her people to spell out them and work, right?
Oh, that's good.
So all around, it's, 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 no issues with buses, we're in good shape. So just to keep it moving, we will this summer be working on elementary curriculum. We're starting with grades three to five and actually sort of working toward actually mapping the curriculum, and that will go sort of two-pronged approach. One will help with the sort of finalization of the standards-based report card rollout. It's happened so far in grades K to two, next year we're projecting grade three. This, yeah, grade three. This work will do, will go a long way to also sort of bring some consistency across the four schools relative to outcomes and sort of set the standard of what is the expected learning by the end of third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. And that will go a long way to actually help our, our teachers to sort of really focus in on the most essential skills and knowledge needed in a particular grade level. So that's rolling out this summer with, with grades three, four, five, and will repeat itself in a year from now with grades K to two. So that is, just to let you know that that's happening, and we'll have one teacher from each of the three grade levels from each of the four schools represented in the summer as a part of that work. They'll sort of do the beginning work and then come back together with the whole grade level team in the fall to make some decisions and begin to sort of move forward with the standards-based report cards.
And while we're working hard at all of this, the state is revising the standards yet again, so.
Which is actually sort of probably the impetus for the work, right, was that the, the drafts are ready, we're waiting for the final revisions to come, they're probably released in the next month or so. But we know what the draft looks like, and that's, those are updates, as I mentioned again, to the 2011 revisions, clarifying and streamlining some standards.
Yeah, it's not dramatic.
No, but there is shifts.
Yeah.
There's some, there's some shifts, and it really went back to areas that I think we had done a really good job at the time of sort of identifying those gaps and sort of filling them, and they, the state has also recognized those and has gone back and filled them. So more, it feels like just as we got up, up and running, they changed them, or edited them and revised. And the last piece was, apart from our social-emotional task force, as you know, there has been a special education continuous improvement task force formed. Membership for that task force has also been provided for you at your spaces in case you're interested. That also has members of the parent groups, community, faculty, and administration. And that group has been tasked, if you recall, with overseeing the, the program evaluation of the special education department. And at the last meeting, just a week or two ago, the committee reached consensus that the first programs up for evaluation will be the middle school skills and strategies programs, and that the team felt that the best way to move forward there was with an independent consultant to conduct that evaluation. So the middle school team of the task force is going to be meeting over the summer to develop their request for proposals and sort of the essential components of what that evaluation will entail in time for the fall, at our next task force meeting sometime in September, where we plan to open the bids, review, and identify the consultant who will conduct the evaluation of the middle school program. And we decided to start there mainly because it's sort of the, is the middle school, and we have four feeder programs coming into one that then feed out into one, so we wanted to focus on that transition year, sort of where those four buildings come into one, and the progression from, you know, four schools to one, and then transitioning them out to a high school program, including transition, transition assessments, and all the components of a middle school. So that's where we have decided to focus our efforts there. So just a brief update, and I believe the CPAC will be sending out a notice with the sort of announcement to the special parent membership. And I would include a note of that in any of the communications I make to our parents for end-of-the-year wrap-up information.
Great. Does anybody have any further questions?
So we have some great things hap- So we have some great things happening.
Yes, definitely.
Been a great year.
Yep. And then we will, then Jamie will work on how this gets communicated to parents come, you know, the beginning of school year and whether it's included in curriculum night or there's some other vehicles or whatever. But, so this has gone out to all the staff and then wants to share with us. And then it'll get disseminated further.
So would you say it should go out in the fall? Or would you say it's an end-of-the-year note to families to look forward? I mean, what would be the preference of the will of the committee?
Well, my thought is that it'd be great if it's a back-to-school message of, so that maybe there's, you know, even work that's been done over the summer can be adapted. I think that that half-day note, that should get out because some people, you know, they plan their daycare and, you know.
Sure.
That's a pretty significant shift for families. But I think there's such great changes going on that this is really positive, exciting, learning information that I think as a back-to-school message might be a good idea. I think right now people are kind of just trying to get through finals and they'll getting the last lunch made in the morning. So, but I think it's great news to start off the school year of, and yeah, people tune in tonight and hear, some people actually do.
It's in the packet, I mean, so it's really public, but.
Yeah. So that's my thought, but we had this forum today and.
It's going to get lost if we send it now.
Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dot, one quick question before we go off this whole section of it. Is there any update on the assistant principal of the high school search?
Yes, actually, they're having interviews. They had a large number, I've forgotten the total, but it's 80-ish. And they're having, he's appointed a committee of volunteers. I think he invited a couple of parents to serve on that as well. And they're having interviews, I think tomorrow and the next day for that job.
Thank you.
Okay, so we did know we were having a very long superintendent's report section tonight, so. Communications, did you receive anything?
I did not receive any specific communications. I just sent out a reminder at the request of CPAC of the survey. There's one more week to go in terms of the CPAC survey. But, you know, I don't know the extent to which all of these fairly recent concerns about people receiving X2 emails might impact that. We know that as of last Thursday, the survey had only been out three days. There had been 400 responses, so that's pretty good for this time of year. And we don't know how many there will be in all. But they, I think, are going to talk a bit about the results at their next CPAC meeting, which is on the 12th, no.
July 12.
July 12, is that the date?
Yeah.
My count in front of me. So we'll certainly be hearing more about that.
And we didn't have any other significant communications. We'll talk about the communication forums and the subcommittee.
Well, just maybe to this point, we can talk about how communications are sent out by the school committee to parents. So one of the, yeah, one of the comments made today at our forum was that we had recently sent out a communication from the school committee inviting parents to come to both events. And it was obviously sent out by you because you have access to X2.
Right.
And so some parents questioned, you know, why it was sent out by the superintendent and not by the school committee. Well, I'm wondering, is that something that can easily be set up so that when we do have communications, which I assume we will have in the future, that it could actually be sent out by the chair, you know, for the entire school committee and it's done the same way?
Like you hit the button, but it comes from the school committee email address.
Because I think that can be a bit confusing. And if someone wants to reply, then they'll be replying to you and not really to the school committee, which is where the actual information is coming from.
Somebody did write me back that question and just said, is this from you? And I explained that I sent it, but that it was, the invitation was from the school committee. And the person just said, oh. I have to check on that because it means having access to all of X2 and that I have certain rights, if you will, to things. So I need to check on that.
Okay. And we did explain that it was a technical distribution issue. It wasn't.
You know, I guess if their, if their want is to have a way to communicate with you privately as opposed to anyone here seeing a response they might send, they have a way to do that now with your individual emails.
I think it's more to be clear who the communication is really coming from.
Yeah.
And it clearly, if it's coming from the superintendent's office, it can be a bit confusing. So I think it's just to make that communication very clear that it's coming from the school committee, if that's technically possible.
I'll check.
It's not a, we can work on it over the summer. We don't need it tomorrow. We're not planning any emails out.
I guess I thought that I made it clear it was an invitation from you, so.
It was a comment made today, so I thought I would bring it up during the communications and see if it's technically possible. Maybe this is something simple, but if it is something that, you know, has its limitations, then obviously we'll have to deal with it.
Yeah, we'll figure out a different way.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. And we'll talk more about the forums when we talk to subcommittee reports. Six, new business. 6.1, hours. We were going to be having a visit from our state reps, James Murphy and Joe Moschino, but they got called to more urgent matters for the state.
Maybe that's good news.
Unfortunately. But we wanted to, Carlos and I were talking that just quickly, if we could ask anybody, do you have specific issues you wanted to know about? You know, obviously the budget forecast. But did anybody have any other issues? Because then Carlos can forward them on to them and maybe we can get a communication back or even if you guys have any issues or anyone in the audience so that maybe we can get some email correspondence going on and we don't have to wait until July, or whenever we can get them back here. So was anybody thinking about anything in particular?
Dot, what's the status of that security grant that we received and then we didn't, then it was taken back? Where is that?
It was just taken back. We got, I think we spent about $15,000 for the training and then the rest of it got taken back.
Is that worthwhile?
So we had to amend the grant.
Is that worthwhile, having our two reps look into that for us, or is that over?
I think it's over for this year.
I mean, they took it back because the production was reduced. So for us now to ask for it back when we're looking at a possible additional reduction for next year, probably not going to go anywhere. That money was to come this year. And when the state revenues, when it became clear that they were going to be insufficient, it was taken back and the state revenues moving forward to anticipate for next year are in an equally bad place.
Yeah, but it'd be nice if we could recoup some of the funds that we spent in anticipation of.
It would be nice, but.
The eye experience, the eye experience and the huge budget shortfall. So I know that, you know, the both chambers, the House and the Senate, they completed the debate and the budget, they sent it to the committee. So once the committee are done voting, they'll send it back to each chamber to vote and then present it to the governor. But it's a mess right now. So it's not looking very good. So the likelihood of us getting in additional money, it's very minimal.
Never up, never in.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
That's my thing.
I mean, it's only one of many areas, particularly with respect to the foundation budget, that is just awfully underfunded and doesn't look a lot better as we move forward for next year.
One issue I wanted, I was going to ask them about is there's been some chatter about paid family leave and whether it's an issue that will get resolved in the legislature or, you know, not, don't want to go to the ballot box and something like that.
I thought there was a bell in front of them. I think there is a bell in front of them. I just read something about it in the paper within the past week.
Right, that's what I saw too. And just to see where they are and how that's actually going to work. Because it wasn't completely clear in the newspaper reports, the status of that. So other than generally of what's going on with the budget and, you know, what education things are right now to be voted on. I mean, there's a lot being talked about, but what's in front of them at the moment. So we will try and schedule them to come back?
Yeah, try to get them here on the 17th. Hopefully by then they'll have a better idea what's going on.
Okay. 6.2, to receive and discuss recommended changes to the building use and transportation fee schedules with action to follow on July 17th. So this is something that policy is them reviewing. And John, you have some recommendations for us?
Yes, you all have a large sheet. The large sheet is what the proposed is for, you know, fiscal for 2018. And the smaller sheet that they have is the current rates that we're currently, you know, working under that are in effect right now. So typically every year around this time, there's certain things in this, say, this schedule we created, we created a bigger project back several years ago. And then on an annual basis, there's personnel costs in here. We know that our personnel costs will increase. So, you know, what we've done in previous years is we've come back to the committee and suggested increases in rates for custodian of the personnel issues. Now at this point, we've, the past few years, I mean, we have a function in middle school that's online now with really class A facilities, you know, a nice field, a very good auditorium, you know, a gym that is no longer comparable to an elementary gym, okay? And then also, you know, we have a brand-new fleet of buses and we have other new facilities sort of that are in place with us right now. So and the staff, my staff has suggested to me, you know, different rates for buses because they've done some analysis on looking at, you know, what a competitor would charge to get to certain, to get to certain areas, Boston and stuff. And it has suggested that we should increase our rates. And our rates always have been, I mean, we're well below market in most things. So the, what I want to talk about is a couple of things. In class A facilities, I'm looking at the first page of this as class A facilities. And I'll point out, you probably have shaded areas. Those are the areas that we're recommending changes in, okay? So for auditoriums, when we look at it, we wanted to increase the rate.
There's, John, it's not shaded on the big sheet. But what you will notice, it's anywhere there's a notation in that, an extra notation in that far column is where there's a change that's being proposed.
Right, sorry about the shading. Mine was shaded, so mine was just a different copy, okay? But yeah, so auditoriums, the high school auditorium, we're suggesting an increase in the rate for, you know, category three in all areas. Category three is really for, it's companies, individuals, it's AAUs, it's for-profit camps, it's other nonprofits as well that just have their own businesses. But it's, you know, they don't necessarily have a community-based. It's sort of any other category that doesn't fall into our category two. Our category two, we call community-based organizations. That's really, that's really youth organizations and other activities that consist of all Hingham kids that don't have a selective signup process and is generally available to the entire community organization. So there's this distinction between, a distinction between, hey, yeah, you can play, you know, give me $3,000 and you can play, you know, it's $250 for the kid for the year, you know. Or, you know, or the coaches are making big money or, you know, the camps are actually pulling in a little bit of money or even a nonprofit raising money for their own organization where, you know, there's a choice of allowing the public taxpayer in Hingham to make their own donation instead of having us make a decision to make a donation on behalf of the town. So this, many of the rates in this have to do with the category three increases. So in auditoriums, we're recommending an increase for the high school auditorium from $420 to $500 for a full day, which is still a great rate, by the way. There's no auditorium that you're going to get for that kind of money. And then to increase the half-day rate to $275 and then increase the hourly rate to $100 an hour. Along with that, we used to have, the middle school auditorium was in that, but the middle school auditorium is a premier, it's a premier site. It's a premier location. Okay, so this actually breaks out the middle school auditorium from the high school auditorium, okay? Technology is better, lighting's better. I mean, it is totally updated, technologically advanced facility. So the recommendation for the new category within category three is $800 for the auditorium for a full day, $400 for a half-day, and $125 for the hourly.
Now, John, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
This is not including custodial. I mean, you have to have a person there, right?
That's right, yes.
That's just the facility itself.
Yes. I mean, that's what the auditorium, you'd have to have a custodian onboard. You'd also have to have a light tech too. And we'll get to the light, we're going to do personnel on the other side, okay? Then the gymnasium, you know, the middle school gymnasium, we always had in the old chat, we had it combined with elementary. But the middle school gymnasium is a class A gymnasium. And therefore, the recommendation is to price it the same as we would price the high school gymnasium. And so, and then you see the change gym elementary. That's just highlighted there because what we did was we dropped the middle school from that category, okay? But there's no recommendation for a change in rates. Not to say that the committee couldn't decide you want to go up globally on any of these rates. Our rates are very competitive. They're, you know, really below market. So, but I'm not here making any such recommendation at this point in time. Baseball field, so we know we have the brand-new middle school baseball field. You know, we shouldn't be comparing that to the elementary baseball field. So we broke that up to add, you know, the middle school field along with the new high school field, okay? So we had the new baseball field at the high school. Now we have a new middle school field, which is in really good shape. You know, will be well-maintained. It's got a good netting system. It's available for, you know, youth sports and Little League uses it. But AAU, it's size of AAU too, so AAU could use it as well. And it's a great facility. So I think that it would be proper to price that out at a similar rate as we price out the high school right now.
John, would we, I see you going down the list. Would we price out the new softball field differently than their softball field?
For the, for the high school softball field? The, I mean, we certainly could, you know. We certainly could. We probably should specify the high school field.
Might help with other issues about that field.
Yeah. Right. You know, so, you know, most of this community-based, right, for the gals, for the softball.
Right, that wouldn't change for them, yeah.
We're still a per participant rate for them.
Right.
Okay, which we set last year at $6 per participant.
Yeah.
So at any time the committee if you wanted to, you know, you could, we could, you could increase that. That's up to your discretion too, if you wanted to. I'm not making the recommendation, you know, but clearly we don't have to do that at the beginning of the year. You know, that could actually happen anytime. I wasn't suggesting to go out here and let's do this project all over again because many of you were around.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's a big undertaking. It was, it's a big undertaking.
No, and I was just thinking from a Title IX standpoint to a.
But I think that would be, I think that would be a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I, I certainly, I think that would be a good idea, that was an oversight. Um, so, the tennis courts, the, um, this was, Barbara recommended that, Barbara Pae actually recommended that we increased the, you know, the given lessons there, so, that we increased it to 150 for a full day, $75 for a half-day, and, um, $20 per hour, okay? Um, and then we also added this new category of the wellness center, and Cynthia actually did, you know, got some ideas on, on what a rate would be, right? So I put down this $20 rate, but there's a lot of other considerations would have to do there, and, you know, um, I think that the, we'd have to check, would make sure that whoever was renting that had this liability insurance, and that one there, I'm even thinking I'd prefer to talk to a lawyer before I would allow them to use facilities to run a profitable business, just so that we make sure we protect and cover all our interests. And then, you know, when you think about how that might roll out, you would, perhaps we'd want a custodian there for an hour and a half, it's like, I'm checking all the condition of this equipment in like this, they're gonna check the equipment out, and then we gotta make sure that the equipment gets cleaned after any such use, so, you know, that would be like an hour and a half worth of custodian time as well. So I, I put that, but I just put a little note because I think that we need to probably do a little more work on that, I think we should get the category, but we need to do a little bit more work on that, but I wouldn't wanna wait for that to hold up some of the other increases either. Um, if we flip it over to the next page, so bus, school bus trip charges, if that's under sports events charges, oh, you see the note, you, you all see, you have a note saying, schedule see below. So Patrick put this together, we have a brand-new fleet of buses, he actually looked at, you know, where we currently go on field trips and, and picked out some of the, um, key locations where we thought we were significantly underrated. He also called competitive companies, coach buses and stuff, and we found that, you know, we're half the price of any of those. Okay, so, you know, with, with the new fleet of buses and, you know, rising costs, he created a schedule of, um, proposed rates, so that's where these proposed rates come from. This is what Patrick thinks, you know, is competitive, um, I looked at them, I didn't think they looked unreasonable, and, um, from a, from a comp standpoint, when we look at a coach bus or some other, um, we didn't look at other school bus company, you know, other school buses, but, you know, we looked at the coach buses, um, it didn't seem like a, a lot of money to, um, increase these rates. I don't think we'd go up on this every year, this is one of these things, but hey, it's a brand-new bus, we've had these rates in, in place for a number of years now, let's increase them and just hold them there. So that's what the schedule rate says, um, and that's really, while the category three company says schedule, that's probably a typo on my part because category three is gonna be priced out totally differently, right? This would really be for your field, for the, um, for the, um, PTOs, for the field trips and, um, most popular category one and two only, okay? So I need to remove that, that schedule on that category three is actually an error. That will be priced out differently, and I'll explain how those get priced out. Then we looked at, um, so bus mileage, um, if you look at the bus mileage, you know, if you look at the old schedule here, we had, um, 75 cents a mile, a dollar a mile for category two, or a dollar fifty for category three. For our athletics contract with First Student, we're paying $6 a mile, right? So for our category three, it just seems like we should be charging a lot more, so, you know, that, I'm recommending an increase to a dollar fifty, uh, to, to $3, okay? In category two, in category one, an increase of 25 cents and 50 cents respectively. Um, this, this would be for non-scheduled charges, so you go in someplace else, you'll calculate the mileage, we'll look at the time that the bus driver will actually be in service, um, because then you get down into the personnel charges. If we're talking about buses, go down below to the personnel charges and you'll see the bus driver, um, for overtime, okay, if it's overtime. For our category one, school-related organizations and PTO boosters, $35. Right now, it's, the, the old rate here is about, is 32, I believe, 32, is that 33.50? 33, 33.50. That was the, that was the time and a half rate really for a bus driver based on their current rate, okay? So we know that there'll likely be an increase this year, so we've increased it, recommending $35. You know, it doesn't have to equal the exact rate, there's nothing wrong with putting a little administrative charge in it either, so that's where we went to 35 there. We also went to 35 for category two, and for category three, we went up to $40. So while we'll pay a, a bus driver at their time and a half rate, you know, the rest of that hourly rate really amounts to an administrative fee for us to, you know, manage this stuff. Cause, you had a question?
Yeah, I would recommend that you also have a minimum amount established for that too, because you do have for the custodian.
Yes.
Right? So the bus driver should have a minimum of, uh, perhaps four hours as well, because I mean, on their contract, you, you could not just call them in just for a couple hours, right? You have to pay them a certain amount of hours, right?
We could put a minimum there, yeah, this minimum is three hours in their contract.
Okay.
But most of the trips are gonna, they're gonna be three hours anyways, 'cause there's always gonna be, you know, if, if, if you're, yeah, if you're taking them and you come back, and then you gotta go back and pick them up and come back, right?
I, I, I agree, put the minimum in because, um, at least people will know, and, you know, if you're going to Cohasset, you could, you could do it in two hours, so.
Right.
John, how many times?
Have we made another three?
You still have to pay them, yeah?
Right, so we wanna put the minimum on the chart.
And I would think that for the category three, 'cause I mean, you know, for a category one and two, we don't, you, you know, if they, if they're going to see Cohasset really would be a, a hundred and forty dollars. So we have Cohasset there, so we don't have to put the minimum down.
But that's not for category three?
No.
Right.
Right, but category three, I, I'm all for a minimum of three hours.
How many times are, or how often is somebody renting, a category three organization renting our buses to go somewhere?
Um, it happens, it happens, I, I don't think, it's not, it's not frequent, right? But I mean, you know, half a dozen, maybe more a year, I'd have to check with Patrick 'cause I don't really, you know.
And the going rate for First Student is six an hour, what's a weekly?
Well, first, that's the, our contract, so First Student would have, like, their wait time is probably like $55 an hour. When I looked at our contract, you know, it's like their wait time is about, I think, $55 an hour, and, um, and then it's like $5.50 a mile. So the $5.50 a mile sort of covers the driver while the driver's driving.
Right.
If the driver waits at the location, it's $60 an hour, and then the driver drives back, it's $5.50 a mile again.
But we don't have a wait time?
Um, well, no, it's just gonna be regular hours, so if we're waiting on a commer, on a, on a, on a category three, right?
It would be the bus mile plus the bus driver hour?
Yes.
Okay.
And if it turns out to be 10 hours, it's gonna be $400 plus.
Well, now that we have new buses, there might be more people that wanna.
I guess the question is, should we raise it from three to, three per mile to something more like four or five, but if that's gonna price it out after you factor in the bus driver per hour?
I don't think we'd factor it out, Cynthia, I think, you know, I, I was just, I, it, it doesn't happen that frequently, we don't live or die for it, it does, we don't really need it, but what we wanna do is be somewhat competitive or, I mean, it's still a good deal. There are, there are times, let's just say, you know, if, um, if a Hingham youth football wanted to use one of our buses, they'd fit into category three for that, not a category two, right? 'Cause that's outside of what Hingham youth football would do, you know, using our fields is one thing, but then using our buses. Or if somebody needed transportation for a wedding, not that they're gonna be drunk or stuff, but, you know, but these things do happen, they, people come up and they, they ask these things, okay? Or, you know, um, some seniors wanted a field trip, you know, some, in another community, you know, it could happen anywhere. Um, so you, you don't price them out of the market, I don't think it's exorbitant cost, it's still less expensive than, you know, you'd, you'd get a coach or a first student, um, and it's actually good for our drivers because they'll, they'll come in and they'll make some overtime and, you know, and they'll get a nice ride in a, in a nice clean new bus, so.
How does that work with the bus driver overtime and not overtime?
Well, if you, if the drive, if we're driving for our own drivers, our own people, right? There, there's not too many of them that are gonna be overtime, but they could be, okay? If, if the, if it's a Saturday or a Sunday, you know, that would be the overtime rate, okay? Or if they, you know, if they're over, if they've worked there five days and they're over 40 hours and they get the job on Saturday, it's gonna be overtime. If they were on Sunday, it's, it's overtime.
I just noticed there's not really a difference between the, the charges for overtime and not overtime.
If for.
On the category three, for the bus driver.
Uh, they're both the same. It's both $40.
But not for category two nor for category one?
Right.
This is what we charge people?
Yeah, no, I understand, I'm just thinking, shouldn't there be a difference in an over, a bus driver that's earning overtime versus a bus driver that's not?
One, the category three?
Yes.
Um, we could, we could make the $40 more, I don't, I, I think that if, if a commercial operation comes to me, it's like, it's gonna be 40 bucks an hour, that's it, you know, and, and if I, if I do it through a driver and they don't get overtime, it's more administrative money, and if I do it and there's overtime, I'm covering my costs and there's still an administrative piece.
It's a streamlining thing, yeah.
You know? 'Cause I don't see why in a commercial I should try to be, I, I don't see why I should be trying to save the money. I mean, I wanna provide a good service, don't get me wrong, right? But it's, it's not, and it's a very competitive service, and it's a, it's a good service for, you know, a nominal amount of money, so, I don't think $40 an hour, whether it's, I'm paying an overtime or not, unless you wanna go more than the $40, you know, I could, I could go up on that as well. I'm just thinking of a start place. We can always go up in successive years too, you know, I just, trying to change the, just change the, the flavor of it just a little bit to sort of get it in a good structure so that in subsequent years, you know, future committees can, you know, maybe streamline, just say, yeah, okay, let's go up by this many dollars, you know? So we constantly look at the structure, you put it in place once and now, I'm, I'm moving a few things along, you know, around, changing the categories, so I hope that we end up with a structure. So as you're thinking about it, think about, is the structure right? Because we wanna leave something in place where future committees can make easy decisions to, you know, make these things, you know, to increase price.
Go ahead, sorry, quick question. So just roughly, how much revenue do you generate from sort of category three, do you think annually, on all, from all these auditorium, bus, fields?
You know, you're probably looking in, uh, maybe 100, 150, you know? Um, I think the field, the field and the, um, the field and the building stuff, you know, 70 to 80, um, the, well, actually, the, the custodian charges and stuff, I mean, and the payroll details, that's actually up right, like, around 80,000 or 90,000, $100,000 just for that piece. So there's the rental piece, probably, you know, close to 100, and then there's the, the custodian piece that's, um, close to 100, so it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, you know?
All right, and then my other question was, and I just wanna clarify this, 'cause I heard some rumblings at the high school, people were concerned about this, no change to buses for category one, so no change in the fees to buses for school organizations?
Uh, no, that would be, um, for, that would be the change in the, um, most popular day trips, so the schedule changes for buses. So from Boston, going from 180 to 225, from Cohasset, 125 to 140, you see down on the bottom of the second page?
Yeah.
So those would apply to categories one and two.
Sorry, yes, but for school organizations, so the debate team, still no charge?
No, no, right, right.
So there's no change, okay, 'cause there was some concern that people, some of the clubs thought that they were going to be starting to get charged for using buses.
No.
Okay, great.
Um, so in cafeteria personnel, same, same sort of philosophy, um, applies where the, you know, the category three, you know, the other category one and two gone, go up by, you know, what we, you know, some percentage so that we cover whatever increases may result, but, um, for category three, we sort of suggested it'd be $35 an hour for the first one and $25 for the second one. Um, just to put a distinction there, it's different, it's commercial, um, I think, you know, those, those seem to be fair prices, uh, I wouldn't wanna go up too high yet, we can always go up next year if we find, hey, you know, it doesn't matter, um, you know, you just, well, you just never know where you're gonna go, so, uh, I think that, that's the recommendation there. So, um, it's really an increase of like 5% sort of rounded up, okay? Now, the light sound techs and the light sound tech for the middle school, they, the, these won't necessarily be the rates that we pay the person, but these are the rates that we're suggesting that we charge for the service, okay? The high school light system is a lot easier to operate than the middle school light system.
The new one too? The new high school light board? 'Cause they got a new one last year and it's, I, I also heard some grumblings from that too, that it's, yeah, that it's sort of becoming a mess because people are using it and they don't know how to. They just bought a whole new system last year.
Right. I think, I, I think, I know they bought, I'm not, that's a good point, 'cause I don't, I don't, didn't hear anything about that, but I have heard plenty about the middle school being, you know, it's got certain programs set up in it, and when the light tech comes in, they, they, you know, if some people wanna bring their own light tech in, and we can't let them do that, but we're having trouble getting younger people to take these assignments. So the increase in rate there is based on, we'd like to train some older, younger people, some adults or so, somebody that, you know, would find it worthwhile, hey, I'll take this job, you know, for 30 bucks an hour, 25 bucks an hour, yeah, I'll do it, you know what I mean? So we can put the rate for the person at a level where we can in fact get a tech to operate the machinery for, for them. So I think that, um, you know, that's what this is trying to reflect, is that we need highly technical people, we can't get enough kids, we're gonna have to pay a little bit more to get reliability so that we can in fact rent it and be assured that we'll get a light tech for the, for the job.
I would agree if the high school needs it.
Mm-hmm.
Do it in the high school too?
Um, yep, we can, um, the, I can check on that, and, you know, if we, you know, if it, if it turns out that it is technical, we can increase that to what I recommend for the middle schools. You know, 'cause I'm, they're $10 off for the commercial.
Yep.
They're, um, if, if they are, you know, I mean, we got that at 16.50 now, but if it's too technical, and it depends if you have a good supply of people that can operate it, right? I mean, a lot of the things at the high schools, a lot of things at the high school will be only one?
There's like one student who is, who knows the whole light board.
Do other students change?
Yeah.
The high school's got that big, it's got that group of kids that are there all the time, that maybe it's impetus, but, so, I mean, it sounds as though, you know, anybody, where should we go?
Need a tech squad class for the, auditorium.
That's true.
Is it a certain price, should we be higher than 16.50, or, you know, should we have that be the same schedule as the middle school? I mean, I can check it, but I just.
I think we should check it, just put the same.
Well, I think that is really a true difference between the operating of the two.
Okay. So I think this was just to give everybody a flavor for what the, what the, we were thinking, what I was thinking, and what the committee and I discussed.
We can go back, we have a meeting Friday, so we'll go back and discuss all this again. And just bring some recommendations.
Great.
For a vote at least. Okay, thank you, John.
Sure.
Thank you. Six point three, to hear an update on the fiscal '17 budget closeout.
Sure.
I heard this two weeks ago, so.
Yep, two weeks ago, so.
I don't know.
Two weeks ago, um, so, you know, as I, as I thought, like, you know, last week, a couple weeks ago, that we did, we have POs closing and stuff, so some money did in fact free up. Um- And so, now I'm, I'm closer to the area of like about ninety-eight thousand available, okay? On the, that side, a large portion of that is the FDK. We weren't charging off to FDK at the correct rate. So, we actually, to make that up, we actually found some, some money there. And then, you know, so that's a, that's a pretty good thing. That's about point two percent, you know, which is not a bad difference. But I'm very confident, I think that, I think around the ninety-eight, I'm confident that that money is there, okay? I don't think that we have any risk of sort of going over. It includes a, that, the number also includes preserving a little bit of pre-K so we can use it for the next budget year. And then on the capital side, I have projecting about sixty-nine thousand dollars available. And some of that has to do with the self-compressor. We had like forty-five thousand dollars in for the self-compressor. We got the quotes in on that. They, so we're only placing a part of, of the, the dead part of that because we can't replace the whole thing because the whole thing would be like more than the forty-five thousand, be more like eighty thousand. But to replace the guts is, we're saving about twenty thousand on that. Then also roof repairs. We have about twenty-two thousand dollars less on roof repairs. Copiers, I am going to encumber some copier money because I think the copy, copiers are changing. The, the state contract's changing, so they're no, no longer given three years free maintenance, so I don't know that I'm going to be leasing all the time. So, I have a couple of old copiers that I'm thinking that I'm going to replace. I did talk to the rep. Unfortunately, the rep has, Rico has done restructuring, so the rep is no longer working for the company. But my intention is to pick up a couple of copiers with that money. And then we also saved some money on the phone system because of E-rate. So, we had a phone system put in at Foster and we also had a phone system put in at the high school. And so, we saved about eleven thousand dollars on those. Now, the, some of the variances added up. We overspent, and the job's not completed yet, but it will be for the self-school sprinkler system. That was budgeted for about nineteen thousand dollars, but what we actually have was thirty-three thousand dollars worth of work so we could make sure we got all of them. We had priced out the single P's, but it turns out they all needed a little stem as well. So, that increased the price. But some of these underruns that we had in these other areas will help subsidize that. So, I think, you know, we have right now for capital, you know, about sixty-nine thousand. And I think that, that could be available to the committee. If, if there were any recommendation, I would talk about that sixty-nine thousand. I'd really say, you know, we talked about the truck, you know, in that we would have used building revolving for that, which we still absolutely can, and we talked about looking for a second-hand one, which we absolutely can. But, you know, that would be, I think that would be my top priority if we were to use any of the capital. And, you know, for the ninety-eight K, you know, a portion of that, you know, fifty or, or, you know, a little more or something, you may want to make a vote to, you know, move it to the special education reserve. And, you know, we're not complete yet. I think, you know, the, I don't think that there's going to be anything that happened that's going to take a lot of money away. But still, you know, some additional money could, we could close out some additional purchase orders. Because we have, at this point, I mean, we still have five million dollars encumbered, right? So, encumbrance means that we have a committed expenditure that's out there. It's payroll as well as, you know, as well as operating activities. You know, and then when the payroll clears and you push the button, everything will, you know, presumably drop off. And we have calculated the best we can. And then it's all the other expenditures that, we have purchase orders out there. We've been using services, but we don't have final invoices for these, you know, such as special ed transportation or we may have, you know, estimates happening in the field. It's like, okay, hey, I think this job's going to be about eight thousand dollars. So, okay, put a PO in for eight thousand dollars, you know, get the work done. And when the PO, when the invoice comes in, could be four thousand dollars. Typically, it's not, those POs, when we do those, they're typically not going to be larger than what we estimate because I'm conservative. So, I would always say, you know, what do you think it's going to need, you know? And the office, is that going to do it? So, you know, we have conversations. So, you know, as those close out, the, they, they couldn't, some, more money could drop off a little bit. The other thing, the other thing that happens when, when you're doing that, too, is we think the vendor will come in and sometimes it's just a quick fix for something, you know? And therefore, you know, could be like saving hundreds of, you know, thousands of dollars. So, the, the ninety-eight thousand variance, so we had some special ed reserves, but, you know, when you think about that, why does that happen? It happens because one thing that happened was we had a couple of hires that didn't take place, right? One is we had the custodian or Paul Fields position and we hired that very late in the season. Another one, we couldn't get a psychologist, you know? So, we ended up using contractor instead. So, you know, those things tend to, to save money. And then the other thing we do, too, at this time of year is we kind of close out the grants, okay? So, we may have grants there. And when we budget grants, you know, keep in mind we're budgeting a year ahead of time. So, we budget what we think we're going to get for the grants, but we never budget a hundred percent of what we're going to get. But we certainly spend a hundred percent of all grants. So, come year end, okay, if there's any money left over in grants, they'll get, they'll get charged to tuitions or they'll get charged to teachers, you know, so that we can use the grant money that is, you know, for the benefit of all hand taxpayers. So, that sometimes can free up a little money as well. I think we've cleaned out that stuff and that's where I do feel comfortable with this ninety-eight thousand dollars.
I do think we have to be aware of why we have that amount. Always sensitive every year to people when we have extra money, thinking that maybe we overbudget. We put in, you know, exaggerated costs and so on, and we don't. We budget what we think we're going to need to pay for what we're going to have in the following year. But as John said, this year we had a couple of personnel situations that went both ways. Some things that were more expensive than we thought and others that balanced it. But this year in particular, this will be true on the town side as well. We had a lot of savings because of utilities. We had an easier winter, didn't use as much. The rates, you know, have gone down in some utilities. That impacted our budget big time for the coming year, but even to some extent in this year. And so, that was information that everybody got after the fact. So, we budgeted it in all good faith. We didn't budget more than we thought we would need. At the same time, I think there perhaps would be an expectation that if we budgeted for something that changed significantly, then perhaps we, we should think that the town should expect a return on that.
And the, I forgot to mention buses, too, though. Buses really, I mean, that was a very significant variance in buses, I mean, eighty thousand dollars. So, you know, we, we overspent in areas, in plant maintenance, we had some significant expenditures, okay? Because we caught up on a lot of projects, plus we had a lot of those problems at Foster School. And, you know, when something breaks, now we just have the force that gets there and gets the things fixed. And I think that the state of the plant is getting better and better every year. So, you know, that energy variance, it's like, okay, you had operations variances where you, you overspent there, it's too, so.
We're, we're pretty on budget because of a forty-eight million, four hundred eighty thousand, eight hundred seventy-six dollar budget and we have ninety-eight thousand left over.
Yeah, percentage wise, it's not a big difference.
Point two percent.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's not bad.
So.
It's just a big, it sounds like a big number, but it's not too bad.
Yeah, it's just point two percent. So, we're, I don't see that as a big over left over. But, so, and so there's operating budget and then there's capital budget. Those are treated separately. On the operating budget, so you don't know of anything that has come up from, that you would recommend? Encumbering for the operating budget?
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're in pretty good shape. I mean, you know, we, and plus, too, we'll have a new, you know, we're going to have new money coming in in July.
Right.
I mean, we have, the, the staff is fully engaged and, you know, making sure that we have viable, good work to be done between now and the, and the rest of the year.
Okay.
You know, so, and then, so I think that we're, we're in sort of good shape. I mean, we, we've encumbered the things that we think that we want to get done.
Right.
You know?
That are in the budget.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
And we try to stick within the intent of the budget.
Right.
And not simply say, well, because we have money, we can fund things that, well, first of all, we can't fund things that are capital in nature that were generated in the operating budget and vice versa. That's important to know. And also that we don't intend to use this kind of money as a wish list in any way, a way to fund a wish list, but rather to do things that need cost more than we thought or that are emergency things or breakdowns. I think that's a fair way to use that kind of money, but not things that we never intended to purchase in the first place.
Okay, so we're going to six point four on the budget, which is, unless you have other questions about that?
Do you know how much money last year we allocated to the special education reserve fund?
We didn't do any last year.
No money last year.
We, we took a contingent vote, but at the end of the, by, by the time we finished, there wasn't, there wasn't that money there, you know?
It has three hundred fifty thousand in it now. I think we funded it for two years and not last year, and so.
Yeah, last year our difference was just small.
It's very small, yeah, very small.
At this meeting last year, whatever the date was, we, we voted to transfer from the FY-16 school operating budget up to a hundred thousand dollars to the special education reserve fund, subject to the availability of such funds at the end of the year. And when John came back to us in September, August, September, maybe October, that those funds were not available. So, to Carlos's point.
Thank you, thank you.
There wasn't any. Are you going to move on? Are you, are you going past six point three? Did you say you were going to six point four?
Yeah, so that we were, if anybody had any other questions, then I would go to six point four, which is to, of our agenda, to review, discuss and act on any proposed end of year expenditures. So, we need to consider for the operating budget and the capital budget, the two separately. So, on the operating budget, does anyone have any thoughts, proposals?
Well, I, I would, again, like to suggest that we, I'm not making a motion yet, but I'd suggest that we consider transferring from the FY-17 school operating budget, amount of money up to, to the special education reserve fund, subject to the availability of such funds.
John suggested fifty, right?
Yeah, fifty or seventy-five. I would take an affirmative vote. I mean, I think, I felt confident that you would take an affirmative vote, whatever the amount would be, instead of an up to amount, just because I do believe it will material, you know, it's going to be there. And then, then that takes any fuzziness away from, you know, what the vote is.
It's the availability of funds. I mean, you can say fifty's good.
He says he's confident.
I think what John is saying, John is confident.
If we ask for seventy-five and it's not there, but there's fifty there, you're fine.
I mean, the only thing would be if somebody else had another motion or a different motion, additional motion.
Yep.
You know, we probably couldn't go fifty, seventy-five.
Does anyone else have any other thoughts?
I mean, the, the idea of the truck came up.
That's a capital.
Capital, okay.
We'll talk about that separately.
I'll make a motion to transfer from the FY-17 school operating budget up to seventy-five thousand dollars to the special education reserve fund, comma, subject to the availability of such funds at the year end.
A second.
I thought we talked about. Okay. Oh, that can be your question, okay. I thought we were talking about doing a set amount as opposed to the up to.
I have to say I agree with it. Not that I don't believe that John is confident, but I would hate to, in October, all of a sudden, to have this be null and void because we didn't have seventy-five thousand dollars for some reason. You know, who knows what's going to happen in the next.
Yeah, if you say up to seventy-five and there's forty-nine thousand, then we can say, well, do forty-five. But if you say fifty thousand dollars and there's not fifty thousand dollars there, but there's forty-nine thousand, eight hundred, then, then you're, then you're out of luck.
Is that something?
I mean, the real, the real question is, are people comfortable with up to seventy-five? Would you prefer to have it be up to fifty? Would you want it to be more, more or less?
Well, a compromise would be to go to fifty and only fifty, which lessens your risk if, you know, things didn't continue to look good.
Historically, this, this idea has met with accolades from the advisory committee. I can, I can, I can remind you of that.
So, fifty would put a balance of four hundred thousand into the account and then seventy-five would put a balance of four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars into the account?
I think John and I are both saying to you that let's not have to revisit this again.
Yeah, because we'll have to revisit it.
Last year there was a real question. If you remember, last year, we weren't necessarily recommending it, but you felt strongly and therefore you recommended that as available. We're saying to you now, we have pretty good confidence in this. And therefore, if the question is, you're worried about seventy-five, then you could go fifty and.
Well, what's the downside of voting up to seventy-five? Yeah, I mean, how much more time when we get the report in October does it take to just?
Well, what, what happens, Cynthia, would be if you take a vote for a definitive amount of money. Tomorrow I come in and say, okay, hey, I want to do a PO, I want to reserve this money. It's going to go right into the special education reserve and I take that action and I do it immediately.
Okay. As opposed to in October.
And, and, and that's legal according to the warrant language and, and everything else. There's nothing fuzzy in it whatsoever that, because you can make an appropriation whenever you'd like. And it's always best to make an appropriation when you know you have money and you want to make the appropriation. So, if you make the appropriation, I'll make it happen. It's sort of like that. The school committee makes an appropriation, you know, from this fund. It's like, okay, here, that's a priority here.
But what's the downside to doing it in October?
Well, the books are closed. You know, after, after July first, it's, it's always better to do things before July first. It's always, because the books close June thirtieth, right? You're supposed to have, you know, the monies that you encumbered should all be done by June thirtieth. You should know what you're doing. You should know what actions you have to have to carry over, you know, with some definitive justification. So, basically, you don't want to say, oh, you know, I think I'm going to do this project next year, so why don't I reserve this? There has to be, I'm going to do this project, I have this contract to line up. This is a project I'm going to do and therefore I'll encumber it.
So, from a legal perspective, we should do it.
It's for finance, municipal finance, it's always good to be definitive.
Yeah.
Prior to July first.
We shouldn't have done that last year. I don't know, maybe fifty thousand sounds good.
So, you're suggesting that somebody make a motion.
You can amend your motion.
Say again, or to amend the motion?
Yeah.
Which, which has been seconded. To, to allocate from FY-17 funds fifty thousand dollars, comma, to be directed towards the special education stabilization fund. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I so moved.
Have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Now, we have, we haven't put into this fund in two years.
Right, we didn't do it last year, we did it the year before.
So.
That'll be a four hundred thousand dollar balance, that's.
Was there ever, because that was started before my time, was there ever a sort of goal in mind of what?
Yeah, the basis is, is two percent of net school spending.
Okay.
So, that at the time was seven hundred something thousand.
The goal was seven, yeah.
And it's likely, you know, grown a bit since then.
Right.
So, that was a goal, actually a cap, not just a goal.
Right. And it is two percent, so we can never go higher than the two percent. But, you know, what happened was when we first started it, one year we. But, you know, what happened was, when we first started it, one year, we, we came into the budget process, and we picked up a half a million dollars' worth of tuition during the budget process, so...
Well into the budget process.
Yes.
Well into the budget process, sorry. So, you know, that was what we, what inspired the committee to, you know, break out and have a working group, a committee, to come up with a recommendation for home rule. And, you know, so it was a two or three-year process, where they developed it, they made a recommendation, town voted to bring it to the legislature to vote it, subsequently got voted, and then the language was incorrect, so we had to go back again to get it voted, and, you know, so now it's in existence, which is good, because, you know, in the event that we're in the budget process, and we have a tuition pop-up when we're, that was unknown at the time of the budget, we can use this reserve to cover the...
But we're still a decent way below, but the cap, or our perceived goal, so...
Oh, yes, yeah. You know, whether we, do we wanna get up to a million alien, I don't know. You know, because now we're at forty-eight million dollar budget, right, so if you, two percent of that would be nine hundred sixty thousand. You know, or are we thinking somewhere around five hundred thousand? Do we, are we comfortable at five hundred thousand? Or is the committee comfortable at five hundred thousand? You know? So, I mean, we could, you know, spend a number of years getting there, and it's like, then it just sits there, it revolves year over year, doesn't go away, so...
Okay, so we have the motion on the table for fifty thousand dollars to assign. All the, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Izzy, I might add to what John said, I'm glad it actually came up, because many of you here weren't even part of that discussion, perhaps didn't understand what happened, that we had those additional dollars that year, and fortunately, for us, the revenue situation in town was not what it is now. And so, the advisory committee was willing, in that year, to give us additional money as part of the budget allocation, so that all of that five hundred fifty thousand dollars didn't have to come out of the regular ed budget. We were appreciative of that, but everybody realized at that point that this is a liability every single year. And so, there were some good people in the advisory committee that were willing to help us make this a real community effort, not just school committee, but community effort to try to establish a fund. And the committee worked more than a year, actually wrote a warrant article, actually made the investigation as to what we had to do on the, on the state side, and in fact, for the special ed subcommittee, that was a year's work, because the members of that committee came to all of the meetings. The rest of the committee was populated by former selectmen, a former advisory committee chair, a couple of parents, and so, it was a tremendous effort, and will protect us in another year, not forever, it won't pay for tuition for, for however long the child needs it, but it will allow us, in a year where the budget is pretty well in process, to be able to continue the way we had hoped that it would be funded, and not have to take monies from other important accounts as well, so...
Okay, so now, on the capital budget, it's a sixty-nine thousand right now variance. Do we want to consider something with the, with any item, the truck, or do we, what's the status of the building reserve account?
That, that can handle it.
Is that, that can handle it?
And we're gonna look for, we'll look for a used one first, you know, but we, we have, I think the, the article for, not the article, but the capital request for that, I think, was thirty-eight thousand dollars, so, you know, the building reserve couldn't, couldn't handle that.
What else do we use that building reserve for?
Well, there are a few that we, if you may recall, as we were discussing capital, but we need an irrigation pump, so we're planning to, you know, take that out of that building reserve. It could cover for, you know, an emergency, you know, some, we, we got, we were gonna get light hall for the east school, which could be a ten thousand dollar, you know, expenditure for, to, to put the heating...
And the building reserve fund is generated from all these fees that we talked about earlier?
That's correct, yeah. Right. So, we'd have money in there to cover like an unanticipated repair that, you know, we, we didn't have for in the budget.
And those are the ways that we've spent excess in, in the past, sometimes with the blessings of the advisory committee in terms of philosophically, and sometimes not, but we've tried to use for emergencies, or for things that were in the capital budget originally, but were not funded.
How's Doug been doing with the, with not, now, we're past the winter period, so how's he been doing without having a school department truck?
Well, for a good period of the year, we had a truck, because Paul Field, we hadn't backfilled Paul Field.
Okay, yeah.
We backfilled Paul's position in May, and I think that Al has still been actually at Foster School, because until, until we get the new head custodian hired there, Debbie wanted to keep him on site, plus he'll, he'll be spending a lot of time there anyways. But, so, the, the truck situation has worked out okay this year, you know, and it was a request for next year anyhow. But, I mean, really, he should, he should have a truck. He does, he does work, he plows, you know, he can lug stuff up to the, the location. We, we are getting a trailer, so, you know, he shouldn't be driving around in his own car.
Yeah.
First year, he was out in a storm, and his car hit a limb, you know, the limb hit his car, it fell off a tree. You know, it's not right, you feel real bad when an employee using their own vehicle ends up in that situation. Of course, they have their own insurance, but I mean, it's just headache for sure.
The tennis court, how, do we have money to fix, you know?
For the high school tennis courts?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's, what I was gonna do there is a small repair this year, and then, you know, we can, we can bring that up to capital next year. I think during the capital process, we, I, I got a quote on, you know, how much would it cost to just repair that area cracked, sort of doing a touch-up? Wouldn't be, we, when it gets worse, we'll have to do a whole new refinishing on it, okay? But that was only a couple thousand dollars.
The plan would be to replant that post, and then do the, seal the cracks?
We'd seal the clacks, uh, seal the cracks, I'm not sure if it included replanting that post.
That, that one post is...
Right.
But it can't be that much money, I mean, just to...
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to, I'd have to go back, I did look at it during the time, I don't remember. I think, I think it was like three thousand dollars, but I'm not sure what, it would be to touch up all the paint, and I'm not sure about the post, I'd have to check to see if it included the, resetting that post.
One thing that, that I'd like to just throw out for thought and discussion, was the citation that we received, the, from the Architectural Access Board, this year's capital budget has monies line item for an ongoing process. There are other aspects of that citation that are planned to be resolved in future years. We might wanna consider taking some available monies, and moving some of those future resolutions forward.
Mm-hmm. That's a, that's a, that's a good thought. I just think that the only problem would be, I'm not sure I could get it done, because it needs ambient temperatures, and these guys are gonna be all booked up now, you know, for getting, you know, all their playgrounds done over the summertime, because it's really dependent upon weather. So, I don't know, and, and I shouldn't take this encumbered money and like, you know, make it go till the end of next year. You know what I'm saying? I thought about that, too, I did think about that, it's like, I wonder if I can get another playground, Doug, but I just don't, there's not gonna be time between now and the, the prime time for getting that playground to, you know, get the contractor, get it done.
We don't have to do it later.
Yeah, no, I know.
I received a phone call just today from a nearby community facing the same issues, and so, I, I'd like to share that with you, Ed, as a reason we perhaps shouldn't do anything now.
Okay.
All right, so, I am, I'm a little reluctant to take the truck out of capital this year, just of being good citizens in the town, because we've had the capital outlay committee express some concern to us in the past of, you know, how we've gone ahead and made our own decisions. And when I look at, so with the ninety-eight thousand from the operating budget, and then sixty-nine left from capital, that's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. If we've allocated fifty thousand to the reserve fund, that fifty thousand's thirty percent of what we're returning to the town. So, considering that you feel like the building reserve fund can handle the truck...
Mm-hmm.
I, I'm inclined to return this leftover back to the town, so that, you know, we're being good, but...
Just had, I had just one other idea here.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'm currently engaged in a security initiative, and this is a program security committee, and it's involving police and fire, and, you know, we did get some of that security money cut, you know, for this year. So, you know, we, we, we are tasked with making a new hazard plan, and then...
Yeah.
And making some binders and stuff, and, you know, those plans are not inexpensive, and then even the, the printed material that you do is not inexpensive. So, we, we have a little bit of money encumbered for that, but, you know, I think that, you know, if the, if we could use another ten thousand dollars for the security initiative, that would, you know, that would really help.
Is that part of what we didn't get from the state, what you're doing? You said we spent fifteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, I mean, I think that was for a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. We put the bus cameras in anyways, okay? But buses did so well, it absorbed the cameras, okay? The, what's that?
No, you say it, no, you don't.
But I, I think that, so, the project, you know, I don't wanna talk too much about security on here, but the, you know, there's a consultant in that's gonna have to do a lot of work, we're gonna have to, new, new hazard plans for all of the schools and stuff, probably new printing materials, and there's a new format for those, I did price those out, they were like eleven thousand dollars, that, you know, for the quantities that we sort of needed. The printing would be in on, on top of that, some of the consultation, so, I mean, I think I could, you know, I could easily spend about twenty-five thousand dollars' worth of, you know, security money, you know, involved with this project, because you sit around the table with the fire chief and the police chiefs, and all, all that stuff costs money. You know, and we typically have a budget for, you know, cameras and surveillance systems and radios, you know, we just took that and said...
But so, this is the, based on the project that was started, that, because we, we thought we had the state money, and the state money was cut.
Right, so we didn't do certain things, and...
Right, so we...
Right.
Okay, so...
And that was one of them, updating the plan.
So, yeah, we, and I just got this one started, I mean, it slowed down, because we lost our money, but it's just something that we need to go forward and do anyhow, and it would be, you know, it would be nice to be able to encumber some money for that.
I'm open to that one, then.
To what, to what?
And it would fit within the security, we always get security money for cameras and stuff.
Is that capital, or is that...
No, it's capital, yeah.
It is capital?
To what amount, John?
I, I would, the...
What are you looking for?
We, we had, we had like twenty thousand in for like surveillance cameras and stuff, I think we used twelve. I mean, something to get me back up to twenty, which I think would be a good number.
For the printing materials?
Yeah.
So, so you need eight?
Twelve.
Or ten?
No, probably twelve.
Twelve?
Yeah, over fifteen.
Pick a number.
They're multi-hazard plans, and they are required, but ours got out of date when those school...
Okay. Go, can we have a motion on the security expenses?
Yeah, so, it's, to be used for security purposes, to enhance surveillance and, and multi-hazard planning, and, and other security initiatives that may come about as a result of this task force.
Up to, up to fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, say it was fifteen.
Or fifteen?
That's the language.
John, you said it.
Okay, can I, so fifteen, or up to fifteen?
Um, I, I'll spend fifteen.
Okay.
Fifty.
All right, so fifteen. Okay.
From capital?
So, Ed made the motion, do I have a second?
Yeah, from capital, right.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye. Okay, so then, then the rest will return back to the town.
Right. And, and you know, and it's a rounded number now, the sixty-nine is about the number, you know, it could be a little bit more or less when we finally get a few thousand dollars in there, I mean...
Oh, yeah, yeah, and you have all the, yeah, I mean, you have their encumbered things to sort out and everything.
That's right, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Six point five, to hear an update on the two thousand seventeen building committee appointment process. So, so, well, Aileen and I have been attending some interviews of some candidates. I shared with all of you the list of people who submitted their application, their talent bank application for consideration for the committee.
I have, I had the list, Liza, but I've just noticed it has addresses, home addresses on it, so I think we can...
Yeah, we probably don't wanna show this on the, yeah, let's not, because it's, it's sort of a personnel issue. So, Aileen and I were able to split up a couple of the sessions when the moderator and the selectman, and we joined them for the talent bank interviews for the people for the school building committee. There's another one tomorrow that I'm gonna be able to go to. So, what I wanted to suggest to all of you is that Aileen and I will write up our notes and ask people for their resumes, 'cause we don't have resumes from everyone, some, some people have more information than others. I have sent you all the information that I have on all of the people. So, I wanted to propose that on June twenty-eighth, when we have Glenn Kuchar coming for our training, that we have a working session to talk about these candidates, and, 'cause we have to name three of them, and then decide, we can put out a request for resumes before the June twenty-eighth, we can also decide if we wanna have interviews of any of the people to get to know them a little better, and then we could vote on them on our July seventeenth meeting, 'cause we'll have to do a vote of our three, we have to do, as the seven, or less, of the three. I believe the town moderator wants to make his appointments, not just this, but other ones, around July eleventh, so potentially, he can make his two appointments before us, then we go with our three, and then the selectman could appoint their two July twenty-fifth.
They're not, they have the three groups, school committee, moderator, and a lot of select, selectmen, they're not looking at just this list?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, and there's been discussion that, you know, we've been, we'll probably, all three of us look at a little bit, because we don't wanna have all architects, or, you know, all one kind of person. So, and then, the three together are supposed to determine the chair, and we haven't gotten that far of talking to one another of how we'll do that. So, so I was thinking of the June twenty-eighth, we can...
How, how are you going to preclude two groups picking the same person?
Well, 'cause you're gonna do it three different dates.
Yeah.
Tom?
So, the moderator would go first.
My puzo will go first, so he'll remove two candidates from the pile.
Yeah.
Then we'll go second, so we get three, the selectmen, to pick them all in.
And when you're talking about resume, are you talking about, the resume that, that these, that these candidates submitted...
No.
On the talent bank was, was, was very cursory.
Right, we would go back and ask for more.
Okay.
Have you been asking if, if they wanna be chairperson during the interviews? Or is that something you're gonna spring out some... Or is that something you're gonna spring out some?
No, well, Aileen, do you want to say what happened in your meetings?
That was not a question that was asked-
Yeah.
-in, in the meetings. Um, I think that certainly, that's a question that needs to be asked once the seven are selected.
Right.
Because obviously that might remove a few people from consideration, which would be helpful, but-
Okay. And, and the meetings, the, the interviews that I was in, the moderator did bring up with the candidate of how the chair would be selected, and it's something I've talked to the moderator and the chair of the selectmen about. We have to keep that in mind of looking at candidates of an appropriate person to be the chair. So that, that's an element of it.
Have we checked on the, or shared with the candidate and maybe the moderator and the selectmen, the information that the MSBA puts out as, because they have guidance on everything, including the membership of the committee?
John, can you send me the exact MSBA, because I think we did, when John and I worked on the announcement of who we were looking for, that we identified most of those roles so that we would get a mixture. And I pretty sure, I think we have some of the people we need.
But we might want to give it to the other two appointing bodies, so that-
Right, yes, and, yeah, we should have the exact list, but-
Sure.
They had our description before of the different types of people we were looking for, so, and, which I think is the same list, but we should definitely-
A fully MSBA document, it just, it describes exactly what you mean.
But I'm pretty sure it's-
Is it not in the handbook?
And what time, what time is the Glenn Kutcher thing? Because we've talked about the date, but I don't know the way-
Oh, so-
I've never heard a specific time.
What, we talked about, talked to Michelle about this, that Glenn said he could come around five-ish, five-thirty. I, I, I still have to confirm with him. And he can meet with Michelle directly, just with her, for about an hour, and go through some of the basics of the charting of the course. And then we could join in and we can, this is gonna be something later, but I'll talk about that, of asking, we can ask him in advance, tell him if there's topics that we want to review about school committee operations, um, so he can be more prepared. And then, um, so then we can join Michelle and have discussion with him. So then, that way, some of the real basics that we've all heard.
Do we have a time?
So we talked about-
For some reason in my calendar, I'm missing one.
AM?
Yeah. Oh, no, it's PM.
Six-thirty, it's, so it's, it'd be about six-thirty PM, it sounds like we'd all-
Probably.
-join in.
Yeah.
And then we do this after-
Yeah.
-we were done with him.
Yeah.
So what do we think about an hour with him?
Yeah. So that was my thoughts on the building committee stuff. So Aileen and I will also write up our notes of the candidates we have heard and just some thoughts, but, um, and, but I will go back to people and see if they can send us a more complete resume, um, so that we have more details on them.
Well, is the school committee, is the school committee going to select three candidates?
Mm-hmm.
Three members?
Mm-hmm.
And we'll do it at the night of the twenty-eighth?
No, we'll just talk about the candidates and sort of narrow down, we'll talk about the roles and, um, but we wouldn't do a decision until the seventeenth. Because then also, we can decide on the twenty-eighth, do we want to follow up with certain people? Do we want to have a phone conversation with them or bring them in for an interview?
So of these candidates on the twenty-eighth, that the moderator will have already selected two?
No.
No?
No, he won't do that till July eleventh.
Around July eleventh.
So we'll have to, we'll have to evaluate all seven candidates as if we are choosing from that entire pool.
Yeah.
But then by the time we vote, two of them will have been removed from the pool.
And what about the, um, selectmen, when, when do they make it-
They will go after us.
After us.
So I will talk to them, um, on the twentieth tomorrow, actually, and try and get some more input on, maybe some thoughts on what direction they're going in and-
And I would echo two candidates that just talked to me personally, calling to see what the status is, who both emphasized how important it is to get busy this summer.
Absolutely.
Particularly around the property.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And, and in the interviews, that was, that was stressed with, like, at least the interviews I was in, that this is a committee that, once it's formed at the end of July, is expected to get up and running. So if you're not around for the month of August, it might not be the place, you know, that you want to be, so, yeah. They all understand that.
Okay, so, that's what I, if anybody has other questions about that, give me a call. I'm glad to share with you. Um, so, number seven, uh, other items, not, not forty-eight hours, do we have anything?
No.
Okay. So subcommittee, oh-
Sorry, just real quick. Um, this was donated, or given to me, actually. Um, I just wanted to share it with everybody, like, pass it around. But it's a flyer from, when Foster School was being-
Oh.
-planned and introduced from nineteen seventy-three, I believe.
Oh, that was one of the additions.
And what was interesting is how modern Foster was with the, the teen teaching area, which is something that we're kind of now complaining about.
Yeah.
But, um, I just wanted to pass this around. I was shocked that this family still had it. So I just wanted to, um, share it with everyone.
It's not on loan, they gave it to us?
I'll make sure.
Pretty cool.
But we'll have to start our own records.
Feeling that it is, um, for the school to have.
Do you have any copies?
We had students in all nicks and crannies of the town when we were trying to check.
Yeah. June addition. Special town meeting, June eleventh, nineteen seventy-three.
Okay, um, so, eight, subcommittee and project reports. Uh, subcommittees have been working quite hard, um, so, who would like to start?
I'll go first.
Okay, so committee outreach.
So community outreach had two meetings, one held in the evening on June twelfth, and then one in the morning today, June nineteenth. So we had a good turnout, especially today, this morning.
That's amazing that the morning one would have generated-
It would, both were good turnout, but definitely this morning, we had a, and I think maybe because of the compressor station, that might have been a reason for the conflict.
You're right.
Um, but I think we all got a lot out of both meetings. I personally heard a lot about communication from the parents, and, um, I think the positive thing is that they really appreciated the forums that we held over the past week. So I wanted to also discuss the subcommittee's next meeting, um, which we wanted to hold next week, either the twenty-sixth or the twenty-ninth, and I was gonna suggest twenty-ninth. But we do have that meeting on the twenty-eighth with, um, Glenn Kutcher, but I think the twenty-ninth worked for everyone at ten-thirty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I don't know if, if any of the colleagues want to share about what they heard today? I should have been-
I thought it was, it was really great, um, feedback from people. It seemed like there was like a groundswell of people who've just been waiting for an opportunity to, to kind of talk, so I think it was great. I think it got great dialogue going. I've been, um, pushing Dr. Jamie's book, The Schools Can't Do It Alone, um, just, but just sort of talking about how, you know, that's sort of how you get community involvement in, in the schools, is to start reaching out to people and getting feedback, and that sort of empowers people and gives them good information to go back and talk about it, cookouts and cocktail parties and book clubs and sort of how you get the message out there of the good things that we're doing, the, the things we want to focus on, and to learn what people want the school committee to focus on, as well as the schools. It's really informative, I think, on both, for both sets of people.
Yep, yeah, yeah, it was great. Um, yeah, we did have one person who said, "So how are you gonna follow up with us so we know that you heard what we told you today?" And I was like, "Well, that's, that's a good question." Um, but, so I think the subcommittee will do some work on following up, and that was one of the reasons for asking about the email address of, if we could send out stuff. We did have one person there who did not have children in the schools and was there just from the community, which was great. Um, and so what we are gonna do is, we'll summarize the minutes, well, as minutes, and then Cynthia and Michelle were both taking very detailed notes, and, um, so we will use this when we're talking about long-range planning. And then on, for the offsite meeting with the leadership, um, July eleventh, I think there's some good points to share with them as well. Um, and so I think that that will be helpful. Um, any comments since you guys were in attendance or no? Um, but I think, you know, it was, it was, we also had representation from pretty much every school-
Yeah.
-too, so that it was pretty broad-based of response. Um, yeah.
That's good.
And I'm, sorry, I'm just thinking too, and, uh, both parents, right, moms and dads, as well as, I was thinking represented, was also sort of academics, arts, and athletics.
Yeah.
So we really did get a good, you know, it wasn't just all athletic parents who came, a lot of arts parents, so it was a really good cross-mix of people.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, there were people asking about full-day kindergarten and, you know, all different pedagogy, where people learned what pedagogy was, so, um-
Over in the day.
So it was good. But we will summarize it for everyone, um, so you can hear what was, in more detail.
So is the, was the goal, or was what was presented to them that, um, follow-up, what did follow-up mean?
Well, we-
Was, was it the kind of follow-up, when will you tell us that you did what we wanted?
Yeah, that was kind of the gist of it, but, and we were saying, "Well, that, that's interesting, because sometime, when we think about follow-up, sometimes we think that just because we talked about it at a school committee meeting, um, that, that's, to us, that's reporting back." But I can understand how, you know, we did send out an announcement to do something, and you want back maybe a summary of what was discussed, or these are the things we took action on. So I, I talked with Kay about having a subcommittee decide of some kind of email out of maybe sharing with people the key, the big topics that were raised, and then, and we talked about having maybe a form online that if somebody-
Critic.
Not sending out a survey, but just an opportunity if somebody sent in comments, if they couldn't be there. And we also talked to, we asked them, you know, "Would you want us to do these forums on a regular basis, um, you know, whether quarterly or not, you know, not once a month?"
Well, you know, we did the building ones, this is the first year that things got a little hectic in the spring.
Yeah.
But we always did the going around to every building, and certainly you could build on that. Mostly it was to let people know things, answer questions, but you could convert that more into getting feedback-
Yeah.
-as opposed to simply sharing information.
And that's what this was. We just sat at the table and we said, "We just want to hear from you." And we answered questions as best that we could, but most of it was just, "You tell us what's on your mind." Um, and so I thought, that's good.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, okay.
Salary and negotiations, we are meeting tomorrow. We have another bargaining session with the teachers' union. We are also now starting to schedule bargaining sessions with the other unions. We have our first one next week, so it's going to be a busy summer, I think, for salary and negotiations, because some things are just getting started, so, um, with the other unions, so.
Do you have anything on policy?
I do, but it's sort of long, so I do want to go first.
Just two, two quick things. Several of us, Liza, Dr. Gallo, Carol O, myself, attended a retirement party for Chuck Hormier, really not a subcommittee report, but it was, uh, well-deserved and well-attended and, uh, other people can chime in, but I enjoyed it. I couldn't find that restaurant again if you paid me.
Wow.
John was there, Jamie was there, several people.
One of my favorites.
Oh, my goodness.
I love that one.
And Liza and I attended the CPAC meeting, monthly meeting, last month, uh, last week, last week, and that was a, yeah, it was a good meeting, it was a good meeting.
And do you have anything on long-range planning?
No.
No?
But we, we will.
Okay. Um, and I will, just before you do policy, um, the special ed subcommittee is going to be meeting on the twenty-seventh, right, yes, Tuesday the twenty-seventh.
Yep.
And, um, so Dr. Gallo will report, do the Walker Report follow-up of what the five-year follow-up from that plan was, and then Jamie will come and talk about from the la, last year and looking forward of updates with the special ed and the task force. So we kind of have a seven-year look back of special ed and look forward. And, um, the subcommittee will also look, start looking at, um, for long-range financial planning of any of these recommendations and changes of how that might impact our budgets for going forward in that category. Um, so that's-
What time is that meeting on the twenty-seventh?
Seven o'clock.
Seven.
And we, oh, we did, we also met with the CPAC board, um, after the CPAC meeting the next day, and talked about, uh, communication plan of how between the CPAC board and the administration and the school committee that we can track activities that we've been working on and projects, um, so that we're in sync with deadlines and expectations and tasks and, and that, so that was a productive meeting as well.
Where do you, on the twenty-seventh, at a seven o'clock meeting, um, where do you plan to have that? That could be a well-attended meeting.
Here.
In this room?
Yeah.
We have better projection capability in here than we do at town hall. That's, you know, that's a major point for that particular meeting. But we don't need-
But the table-
Do we know how many of you will come in? Because we can put more chairs here if we don't have this set up.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And maybe that's what we do, and those who want to come, other than the subcommittee, subcommittee could sit here and we could dispense with the other tables and have more chairs.
Yeah.
We, we've been able to steal, borrow chairs from other rooms, so if it's, if it's an overflow, I'm just like-
We've got a lot here than on Elgina.
We had the parent, the special ed parent forums here with seats for eighty, and there was plenty of room. How many? Eighty. Oh, good, okay. Oh, yeah, that's fine. Can I correct it?
Okay. Policy.
Okay, so policy quickly, hopefully, update on the school committee duties, which is, goes in conjunction with the community outreach. We were discussing putting, revamping the school committee page on the website, and in order to do that, we need to finalize exactly what the duties of the school committee are, and there was some, um, conversation about whether we, what we have in our current policy really encompassed everything that we do. So we did discuss that at policy, and we ran it by, um, the policy gentleman, Mr. Gilbert at MASK, the School Committee Association, and he had some suggestions, so we are continuing to talk about that, and we'll be back with you after our next meeting, which is on Friday. Secondly, we had a request to discuss EpiPens, and the policy currently stands that parents are asked to purchase an EpiPen at the beginning of each year and give it to the school that their child attends, so that it can be kept in the nurse's office in case of, uh, need. Um, there has been some, I think statewide, is it statewide recommendation?
The Mass Medical Society has come out with a, a recommendation.
That that be discontinued and that schools purchase a few EpiPens to have on hand because of the expense that is currently incurred by parents every year. Um, while the committee thought, totally appreciated, you know, that point, after some discussion, we came around to not recommending that we change our policy, simply because- simply because of the unknown factors, such as a bee's nest, you know, in the, on the playground, or, you know, heaven forbid, you know, the wrong kind of flower gets used in a cafeteria, you know, that slips through the cracks. So heaven forbid there be a large number of students that need an EpiPen at once, and we've done away with the policy and we don't have enough on hand. So bottom line, we all decided that the risk was not worth taking, and wanted to bring that to you guys as our recommendation, that we do nothing to change our current policy.
And also, Ed, you mentioned a point, I think at the last meeting, when we said we were going to be talking about this, about different strengths or different brands or.
Your, your, the pediatric dose is point one-five, and the adult dose is point three milligrams. And the definition of, of an adult is, is very biological and very technical. I can share it with you, but it's not unusual for a, oh, a ten-year-old, a nine-year-old, a ten-year-old to need and, and, and rate the adult dose. And there are certain physical characteristics that you have to make that judgment, in a nutshell.
So Dr. Gallo, what you, what you just mentioned is not a state mandate.
No, it is not.
Okay.
No, and it really was promoted, as I read it, and you read it as well, to be based really upon the fact that doses are wasted every year because they expire, that it's a considerable expense for individual parents, and, you know, so you weigh that opinion, which, and those are the reasons given for the recommendation. And so it wasn't a medical kind of recommendation versus the liability, and how much liability or.
And we also got recommendations, thanks to Dr. Gallo and the administration, from the nurses, and they were sort of split in their thinking about it, you know. They didn't absolutely say.
Yeah, there were two, two nurses who would have been willing to do a pilot, if we wanted to do a pilot, but, you know, the bee's nest could be in that school as well as.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, while, while we were very sensitive to the, the exorbitant cost to parents to supply these, year after year after year, in the end, we decided that the cost to parents is not, really within the realm of the school committee. What's in the realm of the school committee is the safety of the children. And the safety of the children, that's where we got into the concern of if there was some mass need for, you know, the school storing two EpiPens and fifteen kids need it because a hornet's nest falls out of a tree on the playground. Then we've really put ourselves in an awful position as far as the safety of the children.
How many EpiPens do we have at the schools? Like, how many parents?
A lot. A lot. And this was calling for the schools to each stock, I think, two or four or some, you know, not
Right, that's.
A large amount.
And I would say, as, as a parent of a child that has an EpiPen, as a school committee, we would have to pay for the EpiPens, whereas, it's expensive, but now it's, the cost is being monitored better than it was a couple of years ago, but also, I mean, at least in Massachusetts, we have insurance, and so you're talking about a copay versus hundreds of dollars of, for an EpiPen. So we would incur, the school committee would, yeah, each year, and they do expire every year. It, it is a, I, I understand where the medical association is coming from, but I also understand where you came up with your decision and, so.
Do we have any child that is so sensitive that they have it in the classroom rather than at the nurse's station? Do you know?
I think they just keep the allergens out of the classrooms. I don't think they keep the EpiPen in the classroom, because there's a, I haven't heard of any.
Although, you know, students, older students particularly do carry.
In the high school, they carry it on.
With them, in their backpack and.
Well, expense is an issue, as someone who's been buying for these things every single year, for how many years? It's, it's expensive. We're required to have two adult and two child.
Something to talk to our legislature maybe.
Yes, exactly.
So I guess.
Seven hundred dollars apiece.
I mean, we're bringing a recommendation, I guess we can revisit that if, if enough of you thinks that you disagree with that recommendation. I agree with it, I was just sort of thinking, is there a way for, my, my fear is that someone who couldn't afford to send an EpiPen to school, because they're super expensive, I have to use one for myself, and I have one at work, in my car, at the, you know, you need like, you need like four or five of them. I'm just afraid that is there someone who can't afford more than one, just wouldn't send one to school?
But there are, there are some there.
That's what I wanted to know, so we do provide?
Yes.
A few?
We do have some on hand, yeah.
Okay. And is there a way, do parents know how to let the school know that my child needs one, but I don't, I can't provide one? Because, just because, if you don't know, a child that has the allergy, you know what I mean?
Well, there might even be children who don't know they have an allergy.
Right.
Yes.
So they're out on the playground and they get stung, and they've never been stung before and haven't been tested, and they have an allergic reaction. You would hope that the school has an EpiPen there too for a child.
First time, first time is not going to be the issue.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
As long as everyone's.
The parent, they will know, if you're bit by a bee and you have that, you're, you're allergic, now you're sensitized, you'll have, you won't have a anaphylactic reaction first time.
Even if it's a couple?
Even if it's, even if, you mean at the same time?
Assign your.
Give you a bite.
What else? And lastly, just a, just a quick update, we have been looking at the student activity accounts, but the administration proactively took that under hand, and I believe had a review done this week.
We did have a review done last Thursday, and we don't have the report yet.
Okay, so some Masbo, Massachusetts Association of School Business Officers, did they get that right?
Right, yeah.
People came in and essentially did a practice audit to see what they would find. So we can use that report to jump off of.
This is on, students utilizing the school account?
The student activity account, so any club that has, you know, the, all the monies that are, that students raise or that are given to, you know, that students use within, that all sort of reside within the bigger school accounts.
There are some new guidelines, much more stringent, not just in terms of how we take care of the money, but policies that exist and possibly some actions that the school committee needs to be part of in terms of approving what activities constitute that fund and so on. So to be proactive, particularly about the audit part, John arranged for a, I don't want to say a mock audit, but someone who took, came in to go over all of those guidelines, and then the policy committee may need to make some changes to its policy as a result. So really two issues, one is doing what we're supposed to be doing and doing it correctly, and the other is updating paperwork that we have so that it reflects the school committee's share of what they need to do policy wise.
Okay, and then the last thing on subcommittees, as we're working on our long-term planning, if each subcommittee could think about your goal for the year and like the big things you're going to be working on, which I had shared with all of you, you know, things, things we have been talking about, community outreach, such as community communications and revamping the website, long-range planning, the updated master plan, special ed of reviewing the programs, and any potential long-term financial planning, salary negotiations, the long-term financial planning based on the new contract terms, and just negotiating the new contracts, and policy, any policy updates, the activity accounts. Because then, you know, we can use what the subcommittees are doing as our goals for the year for the whole school committee. They're all gonna, we all know that's the work we're doing, so don't need, you know, we can talk about as a group if there's other things, but I think a lot of those are what we've been talking about, working on anyway. So, that's all I had on that. Number nine, does, does anybody have anything else?
Just real quick, you sent us the calendar.
Yes.
For June through September and.
We need to update it a bit, I think.
Yeah, there was, I think, I was just going to ask about September, there's two dates mentioned, and then the NEASK, it says school committee session in the afternoon. Is the school committee involved with the NEASK at all?
Yes, they will want to interview you, and that's the point of that. And they tend to want to ascertain your, kind of your thoughts and your thinking about the future for the high school. They will want to ask you questions about the report that the high school has written as part of its self-study, so we would need to get that to you in advance because their questions really are learning questions. And one way they learn is that they will have read this self-study by the time they get here, and they will meet with all of the committees that put together parts of the self-study. So the school committee is one group that goes beyond that, because you didn't write the report, but they'll want to ask you questions as someone else wrote it. They also will meet with a group of parents, and maybe students and so on. So it's not something that's required for you to be at, but it's a, it's a good representation, I think, that they're, that they're looking for. And I don't think any of you has been through that process before. So we'll at least get you the report that was, that was written that relates to the school committee.
Was there another date that you were asking about?
No, it was basically, and then just the time for the, with Glenn. That's clarified.
Is the eleventh date in there, the July eleventh, one for the?
Yeah, I sent out an updated.
Okay. And Jamie and I reviewed, Jamie did a draft of the agenda that we talked with Liza about the other day, and we reviewed the draft of it today, so you should have that within a few days. So you, we'll send it to you first and let us know if it's ready.
Do you, just out of curiosity, are all seven planning to attend? We're just asking for catering purposes.
We're just looking at us going in the morning and staying for lunch, and not staying the entire time.
Yeah.
July eleventh.
Okay.
Okay.
That's where we meet with the administration.
Second. May I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.